Ladies and gentlemen, this is the Planning Board meeting for the 12th of September. Town of Harwich. My name is Duncan Berry, the Chair. It's our Mass General Law requires us to, the assembled people, to let us know if you intend to do any recording. Is anybody present who intends to record this meeting? No? Okay. So I am calling this meeting to order, and I would invite you to join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So this evening, we start with case number PB 2023-07, continued from March 14th, April 11th, April 25th, May 23rd, June 13th, June 27th, and August 8th. Round Cove Resort Owner LLC and Fort Cove Landing Road Owner LLC are seeking a site plan review.
Thank you.
Seeking a site plan review pursuant to the Harwich zoning bylaw sections 325-51 and The proposed building expansion is to create additional hotel rooms and to renovate buildings at Wacquasset Resort and Golf Club. Properties located in 2173 Route 28, head of the Bay Resort, MAP 115, parcel S1-3, and the residential high-density RH2 and commercial Highway 2 CH2 zoning districts. Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to see you again.
Thank you. I'd like to just double-check and make sure that I have...I'll introduce myself first. I'll introduce the people that are with me, and then I'd like to make sure that we understand who was here at the last meeting and that we have a quorum.
We do have a quorum. Okay, so we actually did a tabulation. So that was our frantic concern.
Yeah, perfect.
This afternoon, counting votes was good.
Perfect, great. For the record, I'm Marion Rose from Singer &amp; Singer in Dennisport, and I'm here on behalf of Round Cove Resort Owners LLC in support of the application for site plan review. With me is my colleague John Bologna from Coastal Engineering. We also have the architects on hand from Studio Core, Albert Core is here. We also have Dave Hawke, who's landscape architect. We also have management from Wacquasset as well. Can everyone hear me?
Loud and clear.
Great, okay, then we're off to a good start. I'd like to circle back, because as you've said, we started this process in February, and we've gone on a long journey with you all and the ZBA and Conservation together to get to where we are now. So briefly, we are here for something that's more limited than what we were initially here for your consideration. We're here for site plan review, special permit only. Back before Christmas, we had department head review, and in that meeting with Paul Halkeotis and the rest of the department heads, the clear focus was move these structures back. It was a Conservation Commission focus. And so after we applied with the Planning Board and the ZBA, the first thing we did was try to get through Conservation. And I think sometimes it gets lost here as to how important that was, because we did that in March of this year. It was unanimous vote. And we moved all three structures back from the environmentally sensitive area. At that time, we first had a meeting with the Planning Board in March, which was continued because Abotters, Two Cove Landing, had concerns. They procured counsel, and as a courtesy, we continued that meeting. So the first time, the year before you all, was in April this year. At that meeting, we went through the meat of what we're doing here. I think I can say that the Planning Board was in...it was at that time, you were considering a use special permit and also site plan review, and the Board was in favor of this through a straw poll. But there were concerns about whether, brought up by the Council for Two Cove Landing, about whether the ZBA or the Planning Board had the authority to grant an expansion of use for the hotel motel use. So that went to Town Council, and time passed. And then Town Council came back, and her response and opinion stated that the ZBA had the authority to grant special permit for pre-existing non-conforming hotel motel use and amenities coverage. So since then, in July, we went before the ZBA and made a presentation. We then amended our notice to make certain that it was clear to all Abotters that it was a raise and replace, an expansion of hotel motel use and amenities coverage. We then again went before the ZBA, and at that last month, and at that time, they did grant special permits for the pre-existing non-conforming hotel motel use and the amenities coverage. So we're here before you today for only the site plan review, special permit. We're here for a site plan review special permit for two reasons. First, we are expanding the gross floor area, because the project is to raise and replace three one-story structures on the property that are used for hotel motel use. They each have collectively 12 units in the three. And then the buildings will be moved back away from the coastal bank and constructed as two-story buildings. And so net-net, there are going to be 12 more units within the three structures. In addition to that, there are related improvements, which are mainly the pathways connecting the structures to the parking area, which is around Rose Cottage. And there's improvements with the parking at next door to Rose Cottage. There are two conforming, accessible parking spots there. So that's the scope of what we're doing. I have a plan set or a presentation set that I'll pass out in a moment, but I just wanted to give you a heads-up as to since April, has anything changed in terms of the plan? Nothing has changed in terms of the structures. I think in April, we presented a landscape plan.
Right.
And we have amended the landscape plan. We've made a more robust landscape plan, and we'll get into that. It's really clear what we've done. We've also added a photometric plan to show that the lighting here conforms to the Harwich zoning, Harwich Lighting Bylaw. So what I'd like to do now, but there's no change...oh, and the other huge thing is that since April, we have filed and recorded an 81X plan.
Right.
So there was an issue about whether or not the site was a combined site.
Right.
I believe, and more importantly, Town Council agrees, that now the site is a combined site. It includes the area that was for Cove Landing. That's included in all of, in our zoning table, in our coverage calculations and all of that, but it's one site.
Right. Thank you so much.
Okay, and since we're doing this as a hybrid, I like to hand this to you all so that you can see it. It's a little bit harder to see on the screen, so John will be pulling this up on the screen so people can see remotely, but I'll try to refer to the name of the page as I'm going through it. So the first page...sorry, John.
It's okay.
Okay. The first, the front page is really a rendering of Buildings A and B. The buildings I'll be talking about are A, B, and K. Those are the proposed new buildings. And so these are renderings. Nothing's changed since the last time you've seen this, but these are Buildings A and B as they would be built if the plans are approved from the Round Cove point of view. Moving on to aerial view overall, this gives you a good idea of the overall site. That's including Four Cove Landing. It's the total site under the 81X plan, and it shows you where A and B are, and then K is over to the right. You can see that A, which is the lower of the two circles on the left-hand side, is closest to Four Cove Landing, the house to the left. And you can see, in sort of the corner on the left-hand side, the Shelton's property, Two Cove Landing, is right above the second northernmost circle, which is Building B. If you move to the aerial view in March, it gets you a better idea of the Buildings A and B in relation to the buildings near them. The other buildings, as you all remember, may remember from your site visit, are two-story buildings. And you can see Building A is quite close. In fact, it's nudging and close to being in the resource area. I'm moving on now to the site plan diagram. I think this is an important slide. It shows you the clear emphasis of what we were trying to do, which is to move the footprint, to choose the location and footprint of the new buildings further away from the resource area. The red outlines are the existing structures, and the blue footprints are the proposed structures. You can also see in this, in sort of the dark lines, those are the new and slightly moved pathways that are part of this project. If you look on the right-hand side, which is Building K, you can see that the pathway there is, that's the most changed pathway, I'd say. The pathway on the right has changed, because it's very steep in that area. And so it was a way to find mitigation areas by pulling the pathway away from the coastal bank and also deal with the elevation there and make it, it was more, it was a bit of a roller coaster, or that's what, the way it is now, and it's going to be better for operations, it's going to be better for accessibility, and it's going to be better for every guest. The other important part of this slide is the zoning table and the parking tables. I want to emphasize that the coverage, the building coverage here is conforming. It's actually, as proposed, less than 9% when 30% is allowed. Site coverage is conforming. Amenities coverage is not conforming. It is going to increase by a de minimis amount, and that's been approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals as a special permit. The setbacks are conforming. We've had clarification from Town Council that the setbacks, we have two primary uses here, and the setbacks for each primary use are dependent on the use. So there's a hotel motel use setback, and there's everything else setback. And Four Cove Landing conforms to that, and the structures proposed conform to the hotel motel use setback. I also want to clarify that nothing is changing with Four Cove Landing in terms of use or structure. It's not touched. I'm moving on to the accessible units location plan, and this is maybe far afield for site plan review, but I'm just mentioning it because, again, the pathways are shown here, and the parking is shown here. The pathways are slightly widened, and that's helpful for operations, it's helpful for accessibility. There's an accessible unit in each one of these structures. And unusually, there's actually even a second-floor accessory unit, because on Building K, you're able to access it from above because of the elevations.
Question? Just so we don't lose it. So you've moved the accessible parking for both these, but I don't see it for Building K.
There's, it's not on the...there's those two parking spots or for the two accessible units that are A and B.
Right.
There's other accessible parking for Building K that's not on that now.
Okay.
But it is accessible.
But on a final plan, you'll have it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And on the, this is kind of a cutout.
Okay.
Of the, this is not the plan, it's taken from the plan.
We had talked about it, right, we had talked about it before, I just didn't know whether it had gotten lost, so I just want to make sure it goes in. Thank you.
If I may interject, the whole site is conforming with the code requirements we had, handicap accessibility.
Sure, we just had a question about being logical. Were you building a new unit, have a parking place accessible? That was all.
So I'm now moving to the exterior renderings. This is a copy of the first page as well. I'm mentioning, I'm showing you this because one of the issues you all consider is screening, so it's helpful to see what the buildings look like. So that's why I have this here. These are the two buildings that, to the rear of them, is Two Cove Landing. You can see that they're relatively modest in size. They're conforming as to height, and again, they're conforming for good coverage and setbacks. So the elevations are on the next page. Again, it shows you their decks on the rear, and they're on the second floor of the rear of each of these buildings, and their patios on the ground floors. I think I'll skip the next one, which is a floor plan, and I'll skip the next one, which is a roof plan. I'll go right to Building A and B landscape design.
Right.
So one of the important things for site plan review is to look at screening. And the screening under the bylaw, it says that there can be conditions, reasonable conditions can be implemented to provide screening of parking areas or other parts of the premises for adjoining premises or from the street by walls, fences, planting, or other devices. Well, it's pretty clear that the screening that we are using is landscape screening, and this, I believe, is a very robust landscape screening. We've shown you, and if you were at the site visit, you were able to walk up to the top of the hill, so you saw that there was a significant elevation change from Two Cove Landing to where Buildings A and B will be built. And there's, in this corner of Two Cove Landing, you can see there's a patio that the Sheltons now enjoy. About two-thirds of it is actually on the resort property. But just in terms of where that is, you all saw it, that's at a higher elevation than their dwelling, which is further back, about 160 feet back from that corner property lot. The second page is just, we couldn't quite get the screening shown and the landscaping shown for around the proposed parking area, so that's really the only change you'll see is there's more plantings around the parking area. And this has been designed by Dave Hawke. He's worked on this project for over, for decades, not to make you feel bad, but for decades, and it's a park-like setting, and that, that whole feeling will continue. If you go to the next slide, it's the perspective sketch of the enhanced landscape plan and the proposed Buildings A and B from Two Cove Landing. Again, this, I think, along with the, with the slide, with the zoning table, is a pretty important slide. This is not what the screening will look like in 10 years. This is what we propose to do, you know, as planted.
Right.
And so there are trees that are going to be 10 to 12 feet tall, there are trees that are going to be 14 to 16 feet tall. This is a perspective drawing. You can see, if you look closely, there's an individual who's about six feet tall, and you can see that the trees proposed are 16 feet tall at that point. This is not right up to their patio, it's back, well back on the resort property. I turned off my phone, so I'm hoping that's not...good, okay. It's well back from the resort property, but it, as you can see, as initially planted, you might be able to see some of the rooftop, but you're not going to see the second-floor decks, you're not going to see the first floor. It's a neat combination where the topography here really helps screen, and also, we've really emphasized screening and enhanced screening, both for the interest of the neighbors but also the interest of the guests at the resort. It's kind of a mutual interest there. And in terms of, this was looked at closely by the ZBA, and we've committed to a condition of, you know, ongoing maintenance, taking care of the plants that they die, things like that, replacing them. Building K's landscape design hasn't been quite as much of an interest, but it is also in keeping with what's been done on the property, and it's very robust. There are landscape details on the next page, kind of gives you an idea of what, there's going to be fencing along the pathway next to the resource area, there are going to be fire pits, privacy fences, the brick, the walkways are continued to be dry lay brick, The next slide is about demolition and erosion control. One of the other conditions of, or one of the other areas in which a condition can be required is a reasonable condition related to surface water from parking areas and driveways. They need to be efficiently and safely disposed of by means of proper drainage systems as specified by the Board's approval. That's from 325-55, conditions of approval. Here, all surface water is being addressed. There are no driveways that are being affected by this proposed work. There are, as I've said, pathways, and if you have any questions about how that's going to be addressed, John Bologna is here, he'll be happy to answer more questions, but all surface water will be contained and treated on-site. And that includes also, the focus here has been the roof drainage as well. There's a general overview site plan next. I don't really have any comments on this. If there is conversation that needs to be had about elevations or where things are in relation to the various resource areas, we can refer back to this. The next slide is a blow-up of those same areas. It does show you relative distances, and I, distances from the corner, the rear corner of the Abudding property and Wacquasset's property. Can see that Building A is 65 feet from Building A to that corner, and Building B is about 54 feet and change from the same corner. When we were at the site for the site visit, again, because there's such a difference in elevation from the Shelton's property and where the existing buildings are and where Buildings A and B will be, there was talk about grading. If there are any questions about that, I have John Bologna here to answer those, but in terms of, there is going to be a significant, significant amount of grading here. It's going, the drainage from these pathways will be taken care of by drains and such. But we're here to answer any questions about that, if you have any questions. And finally, I do want to mention briefly the photometric plans that are here and part of the record. The lighting on, there was a concern about lighting on the rear of these Buildings A and B in particular. A lot of that concern, I believe, can be handled by the screening we have proposed and the distances and the hillside. But where it may be a factor, I want to assure the Board that all the lighting that's proposed meets the requirements of the Harwich Lighting Bylaw. The Harwich Lighting Bylaw limits lighting to 2,000 lumens or less. The lighting here is 800 at most and 150, and the distances, as shown, show that lighting will not, any that would violate the Harwich zoning bylaw affect the neighborhood. I also have cut sheets of the lighting proposed. If you, I don't think someone from this board, but that actually the Chair of the ZBA came to the site at night, and he mentioned that the post-lights really were bright. And so I'm not sure whether or not they, they've been there for a long time, whether or not they meet the current Harwich zoning bylaw, but I can say that in the area of construction, there will be no post-lights. The lights that will be there will be these ballards, the lighting cut sheet, the site lighting that you see. And so the cut sheets show these ballards and also show the lighting that will be on the rear decks of Buildings A and B. In order to grant site plan review special permit, the Planning Board considers that the proposal meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw and looks at matters such as screening vehicular and pedestrian traffic and drainage. I'm quoting from the bylaw, "If the site plan meets the requirements of this bylaw and the Planning Board rules and regulations governing the site plan review, the Planning Board shall approve it." This is from section 325-55. Here, and again, this was quite a long time ago, when Harwich had a town planner. Paul Halkeotis, back in February, did write a memo to this Board. He did confirm that our application was complete, even then without the enhanced landscape plan, even without the photometric plan, which we now have, said it was complete, and he advised the plant, the Board, to approve the special permit as designed. At that time, he also advised the Board to approve the site plan, sorry, the use special permit as well, but that's bygones.
Right.
The applicant respectfully submits that the proposed redevelopment meets all the requirements of the Harwich zoning bylaw and site plan review standards because of the following. The proposed replacement structures are conforming as to height... The proposed replacement structures are conforming as to height, building separation requirements, and setbacks. Building coverage on the property will remain conforming. Site plan coverage will remain conforming. Non-conforming amenities coverage will be increased but has been improved by special permit, ZBA, for pre-existing non-conforming coverage. The proposed new structures, A, B, and K, will resort, will resort, sorry, result in structures which will meet all current fire, life safety, ADA, and environmental codes and regulations. The pathways connecting buildings A, B, and K with parking and other amenities will be redesigned to better accommodate both guest and guest services. Pathways near building K, which are close to the resource area and steeply sloped, will be removed and pulled back from the coastal bank so as to be safer to navigate and have less impact on the resource area. Affected areas buffering neighboring properties will be supplemented with enhanced landscaping to screen the proposed buildings and enhanced abutter privacy and hotel privacy. In shared interest with residents of Two Cove Landing, which abuts the property adjacent to the proposed construction of buildings A and B, a robust landscape plan has been designed. The plan provides for a fully screened buffer between the proposed structures and the abutters' rear guard. All lighting will comply with the Horwitz Lighting Bylaw, will be dark sky compliant. The redevelopment will not affect the flow of traffic on or off the resort. There'll be no meaningful change in the operations of the resort, of the resort, as a result of the addition of 12 guest units. The number of parking spaces will remain conforming, and the number of ADA spaces will increase and remain conforming. The Horwitz Conservation Commission has reviewed the proposal and issued an order of conditions determining that the redevelopment will comply with environmental regulations or protect the environmental interests of the state in Horwitz Wetlands Protection Acts and Horwitz Stormwater Protection Bylaw. The zoning board of appeals today has signed, the board chair has signed a decision, memorializing their decision just last month, granting special permit for the increase in pre-existing amenities coverage and pre-existing hotel motel use on the property. We believe there'll be no negative impact on the town's water supply or site drainage, and no harm to groundwater. Runoff is anticipated to be in the form of roof drainage, and such drainage will be collected and treated on-site. The proposed redevelopment project includes stormwater management best manager practices to manage and recharge and infiltrate stormwater runoff on-site from the roofs of the proposed buildings and hardscapes, including the pathways. The proposed roof runoff will be collected and treated using infiltration basins that are sized for a 100-year, 24-hour storm event. Hardscape runoff will be treated using infiltration basins that are sized for a 100-year, 24-hour storm event. By infiltrating the 100-year storm event, the proposed work will reduce the potential for erosion from coastal banks by stormwater runoff significantly. The site will continue to be served by required utilities and necessary public services. All the redevelopment will be connected to existing on-site wastewater treatment facility. This facility is governed by the groundwater discharge permit that Requossette has, that was issued by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. We believe that the proposal will not adversely affect the public good, that the development will result in an attractive and complementary component of the property, and will be a benefit to the community. For all of the reasons above, the applicant respectfully requests the board make a finding as set forth in section 32551 and 32555 of the Horwitz zoning bylaw and grant a site plan review special permit, allowing for the redevelopment to be completed as shown on the submitted plans. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
Construction timeline?
Going to build this during the off-season. The intent of Requossette, long-term, is to be open all year round. This would help in that, adding the, adding the units, but because of the length of time it's taken to do this work, and frankly, the possibility of appeals, we believe it's probably more likely, this is going to start next, after, not this fall, but next fall. It will be done in the off-season, but it's focused. The reason why they're doing this limited chunk of work is because they believe they can complete it during the off-season and before the May opening day.
Okay. We've ever barely talked about building K. Are we leaving anything out?
I think that we're not. I think that the building, in terms of...
Building K is the least controversial.
It's the least controversial. I don't, yeah, there's not, I think, I think that the entire project is a reasonable project. Buildings A and B are close, closer to a neighbor, so I focus my objection for my comments on that.
Right, and just so, as we get to the end, you don't want to miss something just because we didn't focus on it.
All the buildings, I didn't say this, and so it's a good point, all the buildings are identical, so each, building K looks just like
Like the other, okay.
Buildings A and B, and so in terms of height, elevations, how they're designed, they're all identical. They may look a little different on the site because the site's coming downhill, and so there may be a difference in entrance, but they're identical buildings.
All my questions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The 81X was approved?
It was. There's no need for an approval, but it has been recorded.
And do you have, do you have a copy of it?
It's actually in your packet to stamp, yes. I mean, not to, it's part of the, you don't have to approve it, but it is part of the packet to show that it has been recorded.
Okay. I didn't see it in here. I apologize.
No worries. Okay.
Anything else? Thank you very much. I will open the floor up to any questions from the public at this point. Mr. Riley?
Good afternoon. No, that's all right. Bill Riley, on behalf of Dorothy, Dottie, and Stan Shelton, who are the immediate abutters, and the, as you know, you're supposed to approve plans that are fully in compliance with the zoning bylaw. We've raised an issue, both with the zoning board and previously with you, when we thought you had jurisdiction over the zoning bylaw, regarding the use of the word, or the phrase "same site" when modifying non-conforming structures. That question's never been sent directly to the town council, and we think that if she were to consider it, well, we believe that she would agree with our conclusion that the proposal for building A is not on the same site, since it's across what was formerly a lot line. We believe that that is not in compliance with the Horwitz zoning bylaw. And so, we would ask you to consider sending that question to the town council. The, another thing that I'd like you to consider, the, we believe that noise from the units and lighting, if you look at the front page of the handout that Ms. Rose provided you, you can see that there are a lot of lights. The windows are approximately 10 or 12 feet high. We requested the applicant to consider tinting those windows so that when the guests turn the lights on in the evening, particularly if they come back late from a dinner or a wedding reception, that it would cut down on the glow. That would be like a halo effect to the Shelton property. And the, we did not get what we'd call a positive response to that request, and so I would ask you to consider, as one of your conditions under the screening aspect of lighting, that you require some form of window tinting, particularly for the upper lights, the ones that are above the French doors or the sliding doors going out onto the deck. Those are the ones where the lights would be the highest and have the greatest impact on our, on our property. The, we've been over this many times, so I'm not going to repeat all our arguments, but would ask you to consider the fact that, you know, the second story on buildings A and B are going to have a significant and dramatic negative impact on the Shelton property, and I would ask you to not approve those buildings as designed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Anybody else from the public?
I have a question of Attorney Riley.
Yes.
Could you just elaborate on the first issue you identified that you asked that we referred to the town council? I wasn't sure that I heard it all, or it was...
Okay, just a minute. I have, I've got it in writing.
Thanks.
And 325, excuse me, 32551, it's required, 32551 site plan approval requires that when, when buildings, non-conforming buildings are being rebuilt, they be, that they be rebuilt on the same site. That's the expression, the same site. We've previously submitted a memo to you and to the zoning board to that effect. And the, it is our opinion, Michael Ford's and mine, that the same site means on the same location. You know, they didn't, I mean, the zoning bylaw could have said on the same lot, for instance, or on the same property, but it says the same site. So what does site mean? Well, we file a site plan. So, you know, if you look at an existing site plan, and you want to modify a pre-existing non-conforming structure, which is, these buildings are, you know, they have to be rebuilt on the same site. And so, Ms. Rose has made much of the fact that Conservation Commission hold hotly approved moving of buildings away from the water. I would like to point out that the bordering walkways and the bankings aren't being changed at all. In fact, there's actually an advantage to the inn from moving the buildings back because, because it gives their customers more room to recreate between the building and the water. So, I think the Conservation Commission decision, as a, as a factor that drives this decision, is a little bit of a red herring, because that really doesn't change the impact of the inn on the Round Cove. You know, the, the current buildings already have downspots, they've got dry wells, the septic system is somewhere over under the tennis courts. So, the idea that somehow moving the buildings 10 or 15 feet is some significant issue is really, well, it's not significant. There's no, there's no impact, no change in the impact whatsoever of this property on the Round Cove. In fact, by moving the buildings forward like this, if you've been on the site, or if you recall it, there are a lot of very significant, you know, 15, 20, 24-inch caliper oak trees, they're all going to be removed. Granted, they're going to be replaced, but as we say in the conservation business, you know, the biomass that's being removed, you know, won't be replaced in our lifetimes, even if these trees grow up. So, I think that, so, so anyway, that's why we think the same site's important. We think the bylaw requires it. And as I say, I, unfortunately, I apologize, I left my memo back at the office, but that's a phrase that, that exists in section 35, 32551.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
I want to keep this brief. The ZBA and town council have both heard that argument, and the ZBA interpreted 51 and the same site. They looked at the town council's memorandum, and they found that there was adequate support in the bylaw to grant the special permit. So, that could be, you know, at their discretion, an appealable decision, but if you found differently here, you would be going, to my mind, against what town council has said and what your fellow board members on the ZBA have said. They interpreted 51, and they found that they had the right to do so. In terms of noise, if you all, I think you might have been provided with the ZBA's decision. If not, I can read
Got it.
The conditions, okay. We have serious conditions relating to noise that have been addressed with the ZBA. I believe we've gone above and beyond what would generally be required. Same thing goes in terms of lighting. There's a condition in the ZBA opinion regarding lighting. If you wanted to address the same condition here, that's fine, you're committed to it
Right.
Because it's already in the ZBA, but I would ask that tinting not be part of this, because we really have adequately addressed the issue with the screening and what we, in addition to that
Right.
agreed to do. And finally, I would say, just as a cap, there are no view easements here. There's no right to a view easement. What there is a right to, in terms of not the neighbors, but in terms of the overall Horwitz community, is adequate screening. And so, we believe that we have provided, pardon me, adequate screening for the work to be done, both the parking areas and the structures. And that's all I have.
Great.
If I just add one comment to that relative to the Conservation Commission, beg to differ what Mr. Riley had indicated relative to that area, which is, mitigation area is mitigation area, which is native plantings, not area for recreation. And mitigation's actually at a three-to-one ratio for the area within the 0 to 50, and a two-to-one ratio at the 50 to 100. So, it's quite, quite a, a, a very robust plan. In fact, the Conservation Commission was very pleased with the presentation. That order of conditions was appealed, and so we had to file a MEPA
Mm-hmm.
application as well, and it was favorably reviewed as well, and we did obtain an ENF certification, and MEPA was also very pleased with the mitigation that was provided. And we expect to get a superseding order of conditions very shortly.
Great. Very good. Any other questions from the public? So, what's the will of the board? Shall we close the hearing?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed. That's the good news. The bad news is that, it's not particularly bad news, it's a potential delay here. None, it's my knowledge that none of us has the stipulations for the original staff report that would allow us to do motions for, you know, all of the conditions and findings of fact. And so, we would request that you wait 67 minutes so we can then marshal the resources of our staff. Member Mary Masazka, who's an attorney, we would, we would not want to move ahead with this without her input on the crafting of the proper resolutions. Is that satisfactory? You waited six months, I think. You waited six months, I think 60 minutes.
So the public part of the hearing is closed.
Public is, part of the hearing is closed, right. Right. Are we, so are we all on the same page with that?
Yep.
So this is not like a recess, this is simply, we will return at the flow, when the flow makes it possible for us to reintroduce the motions required for this, okay?
Perfect, so I can dismiss my colleagues.
Absolutely. Oh, I wouldn't dismiss them or disregard them, but they may, they're released.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you all so much, I appreciate it. So we're reserving a pocket for that after we complete our next, which is actually a two-part hearing that is another long-continued matter, and I suspect that's one of the reasons why we have such a full room this evening. I am talking about case PB 2023-04 and 2023-12. 2023-04 is continued from February 28th, April 11th, April 25th, May 9th, June 27th, July 25th, and August 8th. This is Karen and George Oliver of Oliver Homes LLC through their agent Kent Dushella have applied for a special permit for a two-family dwelling in order to build a second residential structure connected by a roof or series of roofs. The application is pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-51N, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9. Property is located at 86 Mile Street, Assessors Map 14, Parcel B9. Property is located in the residential low density RL zoning district and is being heard in conjunction with PB 2023-12, which is continued from April 11th, April 25th, May 9th, July, excuse me, June 27th, July 25th, and August 8th. Karen and George Oliver of Oliver Homes LLC through their agent Kent Dushella have applied for a special permit for an alternate access driveway. The application is pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-18K and Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9. Property is also located at 86 Mile Street, Assessors Map 14, Parcel B9. Property is located in the residential low density RL zoning district. Gentlemen, nice to see you again.
All right, good evening again. For the record, Charles Sabat representing the applicants in this matter, and with me is Kent Dushella, who is the owner's agent. As a starting matter, go to the end of the story first, and that is on case number PB 2023-12, which is the application for an alternate access driveway. I would move to withdraw that without prejudice.
Right.
I had started to do that the last time that we were here, and then, of course, in the intervening period, the building commissioner opined on that, the necessity of that relief, and as did the town attorney, and the opinion was that such relief is not required, that we are allowed as a matter of right to maintain that particular driveway. So I would move to withdraw that without prejudice.
So we entertain that motion on the board and move ahead with that? Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, a motion has been, I should say, this case has been moved to be removed.
All right, thank you very much.
Withdrawn, excuse me.
I'll move now to the main issue, which is case PB 2023-04, which is the application for a two-family dwelling. So on that, the last time that we were here, a suggestion was made that perhaps we could investigate the possibility of eliminating that particular driveway, which leads out into Grassy Pond Road. And we did that. We did make an effort to do that. We went back and met with our, and talked with our surveyor, Thad Eldridge, and consulted with the client and the family, and it was determined that the current plan meets the needs of the family and also meets the site plan lot coverage requirement. And to reorient this and to reconfigure this particular structure would, would really create some challenges in terms of site coverage. So it was decided to proceed with the current design, but I wanted you to know that a good faith effort was made to look at that, but we're proceeding with the, with the current design. I won't reiterate or restate every argument that we have made here over the last several appearances. I would like to just sort of address a little bit the bylaw, which is, we're here under Section 325-51N. And I think that we have shown that we meet the criteria of that particular bylaw. We meet all of those, all of those dimensional requirements and so on. I would presume that even though she doesn't refer to it, that you would still be making findings under 325-51A for special permits, and I would submit that we, we meet the criteria there. The overwhelming objection to the plan, as you know, is the, is the Grassy Pond access. That appears to be the, the issue. And I would only just respond to this very briefly. We sat here and listened the last time to the very intense opposition to that particular driveway, and the argument seemed to be that this access would result in such an intensification of traffic in the area that it would be detrimental, not only to the neighbors themselves in particular, but also in particular to the young children that apparently reside there. And my response to that is that, that there are 22 driveways that are located on Grassy Pond. This is only one more driveway on that public way, incidentally, it's not a private road, it's a public way. The use that's being proposed is residential. It's not the creation or expansion of, into a new use, such as a commercial use or, or anything of that nature. Once this property is constructed, assuming that a permit issues, the traffic that will be accessing this property and egressing will be ordinary passenger vehicles, no more than two vehicles, just like everybody else has in the neighborhood. There'll be the occasional service vehicle, the electrician, the plumber, just like everybody else has on that street. So I would submit that, that the addition of this one driveway, given the proposed use as being residential, consistent with what exists there, will not be a detriment to the neighborhood and to that area along Grassy Pond. The, the, the town attorney, in her opinion, addressed the question that was raised here as to whether or not this structure does meet the two-family dwelling definition. And if I'm reading her correctly, she seems to be saying that the board would make a determination as to the use, as to whether or not the use is permissible under the bylaw, and she would leave to the building commissioner the determination as to whether or not the configuration and the structure itself meets the definition of a two-family dwelling. This is the way I read her opinion letter. So I would submit that, that the board does not, according to her, would not examine that, that question. She says in the letter, "In my opinion, it appears that if the building commissioner determines that the proposed roof covering the walkway connecting the two dwelling units is, quote, 'common roof or series of roofs,' end quote, the proposed structure will qualify as a two-family dwelling." So I read that to be saying that that would be a determination for the building commissioner. And of course, pursuant to her letter, even if a permit is granted here, we must still meet the criteria, according to her, of Section 325-54A, et cetera, nonconforming structure, which in fact, I can tell you, we would meet. We would meet those dimensional requirements and those setback requirements. So according to her, assuming we, that you were to approve the use and assuming that the building commissioner were to determine that we meet those criteria of that bylaw, then a permit ultimately would issue. So I think at this juncture, we, there's nothing, I don't think it's necessary for me to add to the, the arguments and the, and the contentions that we have put forward previously. Obviously, we can answer any questions going forward here tonight, but at this point, we, that would conclude our presentation.
Anything for you, Mr. Dushella?
No.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Not at this time.
Not at this time? Why don't we, a big pardon?
Maybe later.
Maybe later, okay. Why don't we open it up to the public? Please step up, give us your name, and thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much, Victoria Delmas from Senni &amp; Associates, 15 Cape Lane and Brewster. And I represent several, several Grassy Pond neighborhood, neighbors, excuse me. So I'll be brief, much of what I've said was at prior hearings, but it's our position that this property is being overdeveloped, as if it were an 80,000 square foot lot, and it's not. The proposal consists of several buildings, not a building, and a number of structures, including those that are interposed to create a fiction that is a so-called second-family dwelling, two-family dwelling. It is lawful pre-existing nonconforming, and what's proposed is, is neither an alteration nor an extension of a single, or for that matter, a two-family residence. From a holistic perspective, including the rear access driveway, what's proposed here is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, which, which has woken quite a bit with a number of valid concerns. I hear that this is just one more, one more house we're going to wrench into the situation. Well, the situation already is a very, very dense neighborhood with every single home in that neighborhood being on an undersized lot, all being lawful pre-existing nonconforming. So this argument that, well, it's not going to intensify an already intense situation, I do not believe has merit. Also, I know I've said this before, I'll say it again, I do not believe what's proposed is a two-family dwelling, including the bylaws envisioned combination. It also runs contrary to bylaw, Section 325-18, Cap B, which mandates that one single-family residence per lot. Town council, I will also disagree, the interpretation of her opinion, which by the way, also included facts that are not correct about a cottage. And that does impact the analysis under lawful pre-existing nonconforming structural and use intensification. But in any event, the criteria that you apply also includes specific structural components. So there's an argument that the building commissioner, you know, when he requested to issue a building permit, has to make his own determination under the definition of a two-family dwelling. But this board has specific criteria itself, which literally have structural components. So to say it's just all about use, I think is disingenuous. There are two separate homes here, each on their own unique and separate foundation. I had mentioned last time, they're approximately 45 feet apart in distance. So I just do not see that as a two-family dwelling, defined as a building and a combination having been met in the circumstances. The new rear driveway, I think we can all agree, it's, it's not an alternate driveway by definition, it's an additional driveway. But I read bylaw 325-18K, first sentence, as very clearly saying that, in a mandatory way, that access shall be via legal frontage. And this plan does not, does not, by virtue of the way it's designed, meet that requirement. There is an entirely new residence that is not. You can't drive to the legal frontage road which is Miles Street. So I find that very disturbing. With that, I thank you, and I'm going to ask that you please deny these special permit requests. I think this applicant should withdraw without prejudice and submit a new application for a more modest development proposal, and which clearly is structured so that access is via Miles Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Delmas. Any further comments from the public?
Could I ask one question of the attorney? I'm reading 325-18K, and it says, you cited the first sentence, "A lot with a required legal frontage must take access along the required legal frontage." So is your contention that adding the additional access negates the fact that they have, still have a driveway on Miles? As I read, that says they have to do it, seems like they're doing it. If they took Miles away, then I would say there's a pretty good argument that they're not doing, they're not conforming with this regulation.
So the, it's a great question, and thanks for asking it. The first sentence to me is, and a full stop at the end, is, is very clear. It's saying that access must be via the legal frontage, okay? Then there's this next part of the clause, which talks about, okay, if you have these circumstances that are merited to, instead of using the legal, legal frontage access and permitting is granted, you can have this alternate access. So I think we're all in agreement, Town Council, that this is not alternate, it's additional. So even though under common law, you may have an additional access, a right of way, the bylaw clearly is envisioning, and I think it's a good thing here in the circumstances, that the access, the access must be via the legal frontage. And I think it's a good thing because, as I said, we have back there a very intense neighborhood and with legitimate concerns. And already, we've seen, I think, abuses of the temporary pool permit by virtue of the traffic and the parking that's happened, the stormwater damage, already indicative of perhaps someone that's not holding up to what they had originally stated was the purpose for the relief granted in that temporary permit.
Thank you for addressing my question.
Tom Simpson, 41, Grassy Pond. I talked, I think it was the last meeting, the meeting before, and told you guys, we're being played. We're obviously being played. And let me give you what the people, the residents, think. I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not going to put it in nice words to make it all look good. Just going to tell you what they think. We turned around, they bought the property. They wanted to subdivide it to put two houses in. Fine. They were told they couldn't do it, fine. They built a very nice house, quality of their work is excellent, built a nice house there. Now they've come back and they've said that, look, there were two houses on that property. That was a red herring. We went down that rat hole for four months, the board, us, and found out it was a garage and a small cottage. And we got an affidavit from the kids that lived there. So that issue went away. It's not two-family. That's what was brought to the town council. I don't know if they've looked at that again, saying, oh, wait a minute, we ruled on it as it was a two-family, two properties there, existing two properties is what I think you called it. Well, it wasn't. Then the next thing was, and it was this board that caught it, they put in a driveway. And the board said, wait a minute, where'd you get the approval for that? Oh, well, the highway department gave us approval. When we checked with the highway department, they thought they were doing a resident a favor, letting them go over to build a swimming pool. The swimming pool was built a year, year and a half ago? It's over. Go down there and look at it, they put in a driveway. Now they sit here and they talk about the driveway. It's an illegal driveway. We would like to know, who do we have to go to? Because you guys didn't approve it. So who do we have to go to to get that driveway shut down? Now, he talks about no damage, just another driveway. Well, you got trucks in and out of there all the time, and they're not paying attention. It's a blind driveway, they're just backing up because they pull... Well, you got trucks in and out of there all the time, and they're not paying attention, it's a blind driveway, they're just backing up because they pull in. And yep, we do have a lot of kids on those three-wheelers, and yep, there's, I don't know what he said, 22 driveways? No, it's gotta be more like 17. But you got people that live there that know these kids are there, and they take time going around, they go very slow. It's only the people that aren't residents that go whipping through the driveway of Grassy Pond, not stopping for anything. That's the problem. So, it is a safety concern, but it's an illegal driveway. You've got two special permits they're looking for, one to build a house, which to me is a joke. You're building two separate houses, you're putting a walkway, saying, okay, it's a two-family house, okay, let's call it a two-family house. Now you have a 6,500 square foot two-family house. Don't you have a new board in town that's looking at putting these things in to these small neighborhoods? Maybe this oughta get shoved back and let them go look at it. But that's what you're talking about doing, 6,500 square foot. And then what's gonna end up happening? They don't use the house, you never see anybody there. So, the family isn't going to use it. This is a ploy, setting it up, because all of a sudden, they're gonna build the house, and it's gonna be, well, we're condo-ing it. This is one condo, that's one condo, this has access to Grassy Pond, this has access to Miles. This is the type of game that the residents are looking at. And the thing that really ticks the residents off, you've got 30 residents that have come in opposed to this. None have come in supporting it. Aren't you guys kinda looking out for the residents of the town? You got 30 to zero. So, this is what we're thinking is going on. And I really hope you guys turn around and realize, this doesn't make sense. Shut it down, they wanna build this family compound, you drive down, what is it, 39? There's a couple being cut in their developments, cut in a development? Make it one acre lots, get two side-by-side, you got, and you can even make it a gated community, that's what they ultimately want. Go do that, don't bother our neighborhood, let us keep living our nice tranquil life, which all of you guys are hoping to do in your homes. We just want the same thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Anybody else from the public wish to address the board at this time? Any other questions from the board?
Comments?
Comments, questions?
Question to the chairman first. So, in my year and a half of being on planning, this is the first where the building commissioner's role has been defined differently. Do we have any context, because this is unclear, we have...
Yeah, this might be a one-off here.
Right, and we don't, but we don't have any, we don't have staff.
Right.
We don't have a planner.
Right.
We are spectacular dedicated volunteers, but...
Right.
Right now...
But it's, we still, regardless of whatever the input is, it's our role to interpret what it is that we're given as fact, as law, and as opinion.
True.
To render, so, I think, you know...
True, but who's responsible for what was just called into question in this...
Right.
Commentary, correct?
Correct.
Okay. My other comment, based on tonight's testimony, was, and I wrote it down, after you talked about a solution, and you took that back to your client. It said, "Current plan meets the needs of the family, and if something changes, the question would be, could come into site coverage." Can you give some clarity on that?
Well, what I meant by that was that we are, we meet the site coverage, right, lot coverage right now, under the current plan. And then if we would maintain the, the current dwelling, as I understand it, if we maintain the current dwelling size, we have to invert, put the garage in front...
Right.
And that sort of thing. We would then have to run a driveway to the dwelling from the, from the current driveway. And, and in reconfiguring that, the, we would be running up against the lot coverage requirement. I don't have the calculation in front of me, but that's what...
So, it's a maybe not a fact, is that correct?
No, it's a fact. The driveway would be a lot longer.
It would be longer.
So, it would cover more lot, which in the world of zoning bylaws, your lot coverage can only be a certain percentage. So, you would exceed that percentage because the driveway is more square footage than what is proposed on this plan.
So, if you, this is just hypothetical, because it was proposed as a solution, if you flipped the garage, and then...
It wasn't proposed as a solution.
It was a hypothetical, trying to get through seven months of objections from neighbors, to get to a solution of some kind. Because our instructions as a board are limited, or we are to determine what is detrimental to the neighborhood, right? That's one of the things we are to, to make a comment by, or to judge our vote by, correct? Detrimental to the neighborhood, correct?
That's correct, that's in your bylaw.
That's the only...
Yes, and we have been taking testimony for, since February on this, and that's a very loose term, detrimental to the neighborhood, it doesn't have specifics behind it, correct?
Well...
So, let me, let me finish my thought, please. So, the hypothetical to move the garage to the other side and the access to solve the obvious concerns of the neighborhood, what I'm hearing tonight is that would create another potential problem. Because if you put the garage on the other side, you then do not have as long a driveway.
No, no, you're missing, you gotta have the site plan in front of you to see what's going on on the site.
I have...
To understand where the property line is.
I, but I have...
It runs at an angle, it just doesn't just, it's not just a box.
Yes, I understand, it runs at an angle.
And you have an existing septic system in the ground to work around.
So, it's a septic system, so there are other issues?
There are other components to it than just, but the main thing is, to make it so that it would be adequate lot coverage, you'd have to pull the whole thing forward, okay? Which means you have a whole lot left, you don't have the side yard setback, okay, to work with. And then you'd reconfigure the structure, okay? And then it's not suiting the needs of what this family has. Remember, they have a handicapped grandchild, they need to have direct access from the street to the property, to the house, so that it can be built in a manner in which somebody can, in a wheelchair, can get out of a wheelchair, get into the house, get onto the property, utilize the entire property. And there's a specific need and a reason why this was done this way, it wasn't just done this way without any forethought, it was done with a lot of thought.
Well, if it was done with a lot of thought, we wouldn't have been, and if it...
Sorry, but I didn't think anybody was gonna come forward and over 17, there are three other houses on that street that have two driveways, okay? They have multiple driveways on their, on that same street.
Okay, you are solving one problem, I am trying to address the other problem, which is basically the community, okay? So, I hear your discussion about site coverage.
If you look at every legal document that's been supplied by town officials, this project fits the need and fits the footprint of that property.
Well, it can also be interpreted that this, this site plan also takes advantage of a, a piece of the zoning bylaw that was created for additional ADU properties, which is a roof or series of roofs, roofs, right? So, that's the...
No, the, the roof and the series of roofs describes what makes up a two-family house, property. That's what it, it has nothing to do with ADU.
It's the same language in the ADU.
It says, no, it's, ADU has to be 800 square feet or less. In this bylaw here, it says minimum of 800 square feet, that's as small as it can be, is 800 square feet, there's no maximum.
And the bridge is a 45-foot bridge, correct?
Bridge, no.
The bridge, the span that is connecting these two houses.
Depends on where you start, there is no bridge, it's a roof, what are you talking about, there's no bridge.
It's a bridge, it's a roof of...
Covered walkway.
Covered walkway, whatever you want.
It's in the zoning bylaw.
I understand it's in the zoning...
That's exactly what it says. White was designed that way because that were the, was the rules. Okay, we're following the rules.
You're following the rules, but they're kinda getting bent and squashed a little bit in this.
There's nothing in there that...
I just wanna correct one, I wanted to correct one thing, it's a slight difference, but the bylaw provides, this is 51A, that 1A, which is one of your determinations, is the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood, similar.
Adversely affect the neighborhood?
Yeah, which is similar, but I just wanted to be precise.
Okay, advert, instead of detrimental, it's adversely, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, and even that, adversely affect the neighborhood, is pretty wide open for interpretation, is that correct?
Well, that's your determination to me.
Right, and this vote requires a supermajority, correct?
It does.
So, and, and because of the length of our discussion on this, we only have five people that are eligible to vote on this tonight.
Your board is normally seven, is that what you say?
On a good day, yes, okay? So, the point of my question is, this has been a contentious discussion from the beginning. So, my, I was looking for clarification on why the current plan meets the needs of the family related to this adversely affect the neighborhood, all right? And so, you have described to me that there are building issues, septic issues, why you can't change the plan, is that correct?
This is what we're being told.
It doesn't.
Correct.
By?
Engineers.
Engineers, nameless, who are not here tonight, correct? So, this is about compromise from my point of view, and I don't see the compromise, and so that's why I was asking for clarification, okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, any further comments?
Just a comment on that, I think our clarification, I think I initiated the questions around the, the, the...
Change, yeah.
The changes, and shifting, you know, the orientation. And that was prior to us having the determination from town council that the driveway on Grassy Pond was not altern, alternate, it was additional, correct? So, I, I just wanted to clarify that that situation, I think, has shifted because of that determination.
I think what we just accepted was, that driveway can be there no matter what.
Exactly.
We have no...
Right.
Exactly.
Right, so that driveway can give access in any way, shape, or form...
Exactly.
To this at all.
I, but I wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
The questions around the orientation of the building was when we were thinking that it was not by right, that it was part of the discussion and approval.
Okay, so, for the public, that we have no jurisdiction over that access or that driveway at all, correct?
Greg, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
The application was removed.
Right.
Right, what goes?
Because town council...
The driveway can handle.
Said that there's no need to apply, so that there's no longer an application, and it's, you know, their desire to have it there has been granted by, you know, virtue of the fact that they don't, they don't have to ask us.
They don't have to ask us, so they're gonna get the driveway in.
Driveway's there.
Greg.
Thank you. Regards the driveway and, and the opinion of the building commissioner and town council, I wasn't clear when I read it that the, you need a legal frontage of 150 feet, correct, for what we're talking about here in terms of, the frontage is on Miles Street?
Correct.
For this property.
Correct.
And now we're talking about putting an additional property under here, connected by the, we know how, multi-hosing. But isn't that, even though it's not a separate structure unto itself, because it's considered multifamily because of the connection on the roof? Is it not still require, in order to put the driveway where it's being proposed, doesn't that need, is that assuming that's acceptable? Because the legal frontage out here on Miles Street is 150?
No.
Yet the, the driveway is exit...
Is 150.
I think Jack Mees said it was like 22.8. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
The, we don't, we don't meet frontage under the current bylaw, which is a separate issue from whether or not the driveway is in, is on the frontage of the property.
Okay.
So, the, the main driveway that exists utilizes the frontage, whether it's in, whether the frontage is in compliance or not, it doesn't meet the current bylaw, we concede that, it's clear. The question is, so that driveway that we have now meets the bylaw in that we access the property from the front. And what I had suggested here, and the building commissioner and now town council have agreed, is that alternate access means that you don't use your frontage, and you're using something else. So, for example, if you, if you're trying to access by way of an easement, or whatever it may be. So, in this case, if we, if this was brand-new vacant lot, we had nothing there, and we're building a home, and we wanna come in from Grassy Pond, then under that by, and we don't wanna have any access on Miles Street, then under that bylaw, we probably would have to come in here and say, we need to have a special permit for that, but...
Alternate access rather than bringing in...
We're allowed to have more than one driveway, so long as there's access on, on the front.
So, that, that answers my question, that the requirement that the minimum frontage is there applies to not only driveways going off that legal frontage for the property, you can also put in, basically, is what I'm hearing, you can put in another driveway anywhere you want?
Correct.
Can I short-circuit this kinda quickly?
Sure.
So, if you're reluctant on the head count, and I'm reluctant, there's no supermajority.
Right.
Well, how would we ever get to a supermajority without starting all over?
It's your choices.
How would we get there?
So, so what I'm, what I'm saying is, I've entertained the concerns, having been on this side of this board for multiple years, for hundreds of hours, I'm particularly attuned to the voices of the neighbors of my town. And when I see this kind of performance multiple times over months, which I tried to coordinate myself, and which generated zoning law changes, which is what you guys really probably won't look at. I'm, you know, my ears are open, so I cannot deny that, and I'm particularly, that element of judgment that plays into this particular function, I'm sensitive to that, and I agree with it. We have two people here, so you, I mean, as far as I can see, I mean, I understand the law, and I understand the valuation of the judgment component. I'm just saying, we have two here right now, I don't know if there, if there's a third, so, we can have a vote if you want, I mean...
May I just have a moment?
Yes, absolutely, I'm just trying to cut to the chase, okay? Because it's been months, and, you know, it's like, I hear both sides loud and clear, and I've thought about this, and I've, you know, so, please, take your time.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely. Shall we take a, we, I just was, I've just heard from our seventh member, who looks like it's gonna be another hour, by the way. So, if you're willing to get this business done tonight, we can take a, let's say, let's say a 15-minute?
Do we have the document that we need to write?
No, that's what I'm saying, do we have any?
I don't, but I just don't know how we'll get it.
Well, Mary can get it, she can probably access it from her town material, her town portal. I don't think that it's online, from the stuff that I have.
I haven't seen it.
From the drop box, I don't think we have it. We're looking for the, the staff report, so we can generate a motion for conditions, and, you know...
Yeah, we don't have the report.
I don't know that we have that.
That's, we don't, that's why we don't have it here, that's why I'm waiting for Mary. Oh, it exists.
I don't think it does, the town planner used to put together as part of our package, the...
Yes, please. Before you do, can I just say, we're going to take, we will, we're gonna take a recess until 8:18, okay? No, let's just keep it open, because the hearing is still open, but we're in recess right now.
Hearing's still open, we're just in recess.
She's not, she's not qualified to vote, but she can help us craft the motions that are required. No, so Alan is kind of, but the five of us? We've got five, we're ready, yeah, we're ready to go, so we're ready to vote.
We do not have the information to craft.
No, we want the proper reading into the motion of all of the findings of fact, right? And then the conditions of approval. So, those are usually, it's kind of a boilerplate thing, but this has been on the fly, and I don't think any one of us wants to put you into a position where you would be vulnerable by our lack of expertise. Now, if, I would much prefer, you know, personally, clear this out, even if it's a little extra time here tonight. So, my only thing is, I want to make sure that she can access it, or do you have in your files, or anything that might be in the cloud, a document, our staff report, that is, was probably at the eight-eight meeting, or at the, or the July twenty-seventh, twenty-fifth meeting?
There's a memorandum.
Oh, here we, here we go.
It's what's the date?
So.
It's probably amended, though, in April?
So, I think what we need to do is have, since the meeting is, the, the hearing is closed, we need to bring Mary up to speed on the, the kind of, the trackings of the things that have been added, detracted, subtracted from the work and from your request. So, we just want to make sure that all our motions reflect that, so. Right, so, and so this was, right.
So, can Mary vote?
She doesn't have to vote, she can't vote, but she can make the motion.
So, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a quick question?
Please, of course.
So, Mary's absence tonight means that she can't vote.
Right.
My understanding was that one person was also absent from the April meeting?
We've got the tally. We've got it.
Great, okay, all right, so the voting number is not the concern.
We're tracking that.
Make sure the motion is crafted.
So, so Mary's purpose is to provide, like, semantic support, okay? So that we don't have something that's riddled with holes. If we don't, we don't get the finding of facts right, it goes to you, it's like, I don't want that to happen to you guys, okay?
Yeah, totally fair.
I don't know if we amended it. I don't know if that got amended.
I think for Wacoasit.
No, that's my question, that's why we need to walk her through this and get, and I, you know what? If it takes some time, let's just do it, because it's been months, you know? Like, I just want to make sure, because I think we're all. Right, so, tonight, we're going to take care of two dangling pieces, I suspect.
That's why there's five.
You know, and I'm, like I said, I'm sympathetic with both sides here, I don't think we're, like, I don't think anybody's speaking out of school here, but this is, right now, it's like. Pretty clear, it's like, we, I don't, I don't think anybody's going to change their mind. We may as well vote and resolve, let's see where the chips lie, you know? So, I'm going to grab some water.
That's how it's written.
Yeah, that's the way it's written.
I can't vote on Wacoasit, I missed one meeting.
You didn't do the Mollin.
I mean, I'm sorry, all of the homes. I looked at it five minutes ago, and now you, okay, so HM is there? And those aren't my initials, right? Could you guys confirm that? Well, I'm, I'm in then.
So, like, I could, we've had like six hearings, seven hearings, over the course of all this time. This predates, in fact, coming on the board, I think. That's why, because I came back on.
Right.
But that was three, I was back on.
There's only so much control in one of the houses.
And I think we're an alternate. I was alternate, so I probably didn't ask. So, that's, we better not, you know? Well, that's why I said, because you only need majority for that. So, I said to Craig, I'm like, I'll step away, because I don't want to have any, like. I'm here for most support.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
How you been?
Good, just busy, yeah, yeah. Run a camp in the summer, that's why summers are so hard to get out, but.
Yeah.
That was good, busy, back at school. I, I ref'd a soccer game right before this, so I stopped at the mobile, got changed, yeah.
Good man with the tie.
Yeah, I went to school every day, so, just like.
Well, it's interesting, we're kind of getting some stuff done tonight. No, I mean, I'm happy that we're kind of moving ahead.
So, Mary's looking at.
She's looking at nine?
Yeah.
No, I wouldn't, I would have, I would have been happy if we had an accurate staff for today to just say, here are the findings of fact, and here are the conditions of approval. It's like, and, you know, like, when she can just peel off, you know, the task report, and the, ah, ah, kind of, you know, change like such and such, and it's like, well, you know, I don't like that stuff, you know?
I don't either.
You know, so, it's like, and it's, we owe it to them to get it right, you know, it's like.
No, I got a whole new board, who's a former state senator, and he also has a DRO.
So, I'm hoping that we can get these guys on, so they can.
That's right.
Sure that, so, we're going to go through, uh. But, you know, it would be really great if we had somebody who could.
All right, so I think that's what you're going to, you're going to have to redesign.
And it's all there, so.
Because I think an appeal would then do that, the question is. Right, that's exactly.
Either land court or to the, or the superior court.
And you don't, I don't know what kind of time that takes, and money.
It could be a year, half a year's. All right, okay.
Do we have to wait for Mr.?
We have to, we have to wait till late eighteen, because that's what we set. So, we have a hundred and eighty seconds. All right, this is done. We get one, and we lose one.
Yeah, but, as long as you did the Mollin, but that's why, oh, you were even.
I was like dunking, I totally forgot about that.
I don't tell anybody.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. So, I did it for, I did it for nothing.
A good try.
Whatever. If I have the, I can read them, but I just can't.
We have the script, yeah.
Okay, you have the script there.
We have a script here, but we do not have any of the other conditions of approval. So, let me just get back to Mary here. Appreciate your patience here, one thing, I got to get back to our member who's on her way here. Thank you for your patience, I appreciate it, sorry about that. So, yeah, so we're now back out of recess right now at eight twenty.
So, I wanted to, to just clarify on the, the, the voting members that you have on this hearing.
Correct.
Are, there are six people here, obviously, tonight.
Right.
So, is there a seventh?
There's a seventh, but she is not eligible, we only have five, and the, the, those members are Barry, Chadwick, Tucker, Rudy, and Maslowski, so, those. Oh, she, but she says, she's, she said she's qualified here, at this one. But she's not here, because she had to miss this, so she's therefore not qualified.
Right, because she hasn't heard tonight.
She has not heard, so she is not, is not able to attend this.
And I'm on there, you missed me.
Yes, Harry's on there.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
There are only five.
Yes.
I, I misread that, she's not here, she doesn't qualify, and you're here. So, you're the, we're the five.
He is here.
Right, so, we, we are the five.
That's it.
That's it. So, the supermajority is a four, yeah, but Alan was late, he just came on.
So, are there five persons hearing, because I thought you said earlier, seven?
We have a seven-person board, but we're.
Or five people are hearing.
Five are able to vote.
Five are the ones who have heard all the testimony, been at every meeting.
Right, so we have, out of the five, we have two possible negatives.
Correct.
All right, okay, so, one thing, before I go further, I just wanted to clarify, and I'll be very quick. One thing I want to clarify is that if we were to do a redesign, it would mean, we're telling you that under the current area and size, we couldn't really do it to accommodate lot coverage. So, that would require a significant reduction in the size of the structure, so that you know that if, if there's a new plan presented, that, then it is possible to do it, but it would have to be a significant change in the size of the structure in order to accommodate that. We'd have to see if we can do it. So, having said that, I think we'd like to do, if we may, like to move to withdraw without prejudice, this application, and see if we can refile with a reconfigured plan.
That would make absolute sense.
Yep.
So, it's, I'm assuming that's something we're going to need to take a motion and vote on, with that, just accept your withdrawal without prejudice?
Correct.
Okay, so I would like to entertain a motion about a withdrawal without prejudice?
Second.
That's, so that's your move, your motion?
So, move.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your patience, we look forward to reviewing the next document.
Yeah, thank you very much for your proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that takes us to the third item for the evening, and I just wanted to let the Wacoasit contention. So that takes us to the third item for the evening, um, and I just wanted to let the quocet contingent know that we are communicating with our other members, so we're, we will hear momentarily when they're on their way from, she's on her way from Yarmouth, and we will get this straight tonight. And I want to thank everybody from Harwich Port that came out this evening. Thank you, we appreciate, uh, this is how the process works, and I thank you for your diligence and, and your efforts.
Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you, all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you for participating.
Thank you for your service.
We barely get that.
Yeah, we'd never hear that one, so anyway, this evening, we continue on with case number PB twenty twenty-three dash twenty. This is also continued from June twenty-seventh, July eleventh, July twenty-seventh, and August twenty-second. Main Street, uh, Stone Horse LLC through its agent attorney, William Riley, is seeking a modification of site plan special permit, PB twenty nineteen dash thirteen, in order to reduce patios and walkways and increase parking. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, section three twenty-five dash fifty-five, and in accordance with Mass General Law, chapter forty-eight, section nine. Property is located at eight seventy-eight Route twenty-eight, Accessors Map twenty-five, parcel A two. Property is located in commercial high-density CH dash one zone district. We understood you have material for us, and look, here we go. Colored to boot. Great.
Well, I have Mr. Eldridge, who provides the plan for us.
Thank you, Mr. Eldridge. Retirement isn't always cracked up to be, it's okay.
I wanted to make sure, did everybody receive the letter from Attorney Riley dated September eighth? Okay, because I've got extra copies here in case you didn't. And we also have extra copies of the, um.
As-built progress plan.
With it, correct. So, gentlemen.
All right, so the, uh, since our last meeting, we have the stamped, uh, progress plan from Terry, showing the as-built, uh, we couldn't put the paving on because it wasn't finished until today.
I saw it.
If you've driven by.
You drove by.
It is, uh, the paving's complete. One of, uh, the matters, it's been a headache for Jack Mee, his residence in the second floor of the, we'll call the office building, and there are no longer anybody living there, uh, except for the family of the onsite manager. I mean, technically, the property, that building's registered as a, a single-family dwelling.
Right.
So one of the things we'd like to do with that building is not sprinkle it. The original permit required all buildings to be sprinkled. You know, it's still possible that at some time in the future, we might come back, seek another modification to sprinkle the building and allow workforce housing there as well, but right now, um, we don't want to do that. So the, the, um, uh, one of the other changes, of course, is the fact that we only have a single patio instead of four small ones.
Yep.
The, uh, we believe, particularly considering, uh, the neighbors' concerns about gatherings at the gazebo, when the gazebo was located, uh, further to the south, uh, where, uh, one of the patios would have been, uh, about noise from, from that gazebo, we think that, uh, looking at a single patio between the buildings, will, is the most efficient way and probably, uh, would have less noise impact on the neighbors. And as I've indicated to you in the past, uh, Mr. Rudnick made that change, uh, because it was recommended to him by the former building commissioner, who did not have the authority, right, to do it. The, uh, we'd, we'd like to be able to continue to use the gravel area for temporary parking, uh, this season. We believe that, as you may recall, the concept was, this is gonna be used by international workers who had J-one visas. Uh, J-one visa workers don't have cars, and so, uh, that got kicked into the trashcan by COVID when international travel stopped, no J-one visas were being issued. And the employers who rent the buildings from Mr. Rudnick, we've got workers who had H-two-B visas. Those are multi-year visas. Most of those people do have cars, uh, but, uh, so we'd like to be able to continue to use the, the gravel parking for the time being. We believe that by next spring, we'll be back to using primarily J-one visas, uh, workers, and so we think that the parking issue, to the extent it's been a problem, will, uh, go away. The, um, uh, Mr. Rudnick has hired a landscaper, uh, to, to plantings, and Terry has been, uh, supervising, uh, that work, uh, and can provide you with, uh, some report on that. The issue of the low-level electrical lights, uh, is being handled by EF Winslow, uh, and they're in the process of being replaced. The, uh, and as we said, the paving is, paving is done, so, uh.
There was a dumpster issue as well, wasn't there?
Beg your pardon?
Wasn't there a dumpster placement concern?
Well, we, the, uh, well, the only reason there was a concern about the dumpster placement is because the issue that you raised, Mr. Chairman, about the steepness of the.
Right. I think Jack Mee talked about it too, but I mean, I'm just remembering that. I, I'm, I'm not gonna take any credit.
Oh, please, take the credit.
No ownership on that one, but that, I recall that was a, but I can't remember, does this?
And it's related to the handicap parking.
So does this, does this current dumpster placement on this, uh?
Yeah, it's gonna, and so.
Is it new?
We submitted, you should have.
Right.
A copy of the handicap ramp plan.
This is the one, no, I don't think we have that. I have the one from July nineteenth.
No, this, well, we don't, I only have one copy.
I have it on my computer somewhere.
Okay, great, thank you.
We'd like to be able to keep the dumpster where it is because the onsite manager, um, one of his job requirements is to monitor that to make sure that.
Right.
Uh, A, people are not throwing it on the ground, and B, that, uh, non-residents are not using it.
Right.
So we have completed the construction of the ramp. Uh, Terry has reported to me that the post for the railings, handicap railings are in place, and the railings will be set up shortly. I think that's about it. Terry, did you want to report on the paving?
Right, dumpster.
Yes, the, uh, first of all, the handicap ramp complies with all aspects of, uh, requirements for handicap ramps. Secondly, the pavement that is at the bottom of the handicap ramp.
Right.
Is relatively flat for the first, I'd say, six feet, and the door to get into the dumpster is also flat. That is, the pavement underneath that is also flat, so that somebody's handicapped, they can wheel down.
Okay.
They can open the door, they can, uh, dump their trash, and life is good. So it all works out well. The, uh, the other thing is, it's always confusing, one of those slopes is thirteen to one, thirteen point five to one, which is flatter than twelve to one.
Right.
You're going out thirteen feet in one foot versus twelve feet. I've had a few people ask me, uh, you know, I don't think you're right, or tell me I didn't think I was right, but it is. Second thing is, all of the light symbols in black are the original, uh, walkway lighting, and those are all wired now. There's no longer any, uh.
Solar, yep.
Fighting along there. What's that?
We've also paved the walkways that were just gravel.
Right.
That have been requested.
Is that asphalt, or was that?
Asphalt.
Okay, right.
As, as we discussed here.
Right, just want to make sure.
Is that completed now for all the walkways?
Yes. Did he, right, the, the things that are shown on this plan are the things that are completed. So we, we don't show the main paving because that wasn't completed when Terry did the plan.
Right.
But we will be submitting another plan that shows it.
Not to, uh, correct you, but.
No, just correct me.
The block is shown where new binder was gonna be laid, and then everything would be overlaid, as far as the driveways and, and parking areas are concerned. In the back is the layout of the, uh, walkways.
Right.
As paved, as to be paved, and, um, you'll notice one has a rounded and the other one has a angle.
Right.
It's because there is a.
Like a junction box or something like that?
Electrical box or something. My memory is terrible. A meter.
Meter, right.
On a post right there. That's one reason I retired, I can't remember anything anymore. I would like to address the landscape layout. This is a base plan for a landscaper architect to come up with some design.
Right.
And the two designs that we're looking for from him, or the design we're looking for is foundation plantings along the county roadside and along the main street side of the two big buildings. And other than that, oh, and two little encypreses to the right of what's, I've labeled as a stockade fence and there's a fifty-foot mark.
Yes.
There's a line going down at an angle. We're gonna put two little encypreses in there for Mr. Gassella, and, uh, well, something was supposed to have been done a while ago, but it will get done now that it's part of your approval.
Right.
Well, now that we have a contractor working on it.
Yeah, this is great. Looks like we've made some progress here. Looks like we've made some progress here.
Well, I think, uh, I agree. I think we're in, uh, substantial compliance. The, uh, with really just a, some minor planting stuff to be done.
Any questions from the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And some looming and seating where all of the equipment.
Right. So do we have questions from the board here? Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the ramp that's being constructed, and I know you mentioned the ratios, and that's over my head, but in looking at Jack Mee's, the building commissioner's, uh, recommendations, he says, uh, this is a document on August twenty-second, uh, the ramp drawn in the recently submitted documents be building code compliant. If not, what do you need? I do not, and this is Jack's response, I do not believe the ramp is drawn is code compliant, and I've sent this to Mr. Riley, requiring that this is reviewed by a qualified engineer, and the plan should be stamped as such by, by such engineer.
By license as a land surveyor, I am licensed to do things in a vertical direction. It goes back to when land surveyors first became licensed in nineteen sixty-eight. We had highway surveyors everywhere, and they wanted to make sure that the highway surveyors that became registered, because back then you just had to write your name and address and send it in and give them a hundred bucks, and they gave you a license. Highway surveyors did roads. They did the vertical designs, they did the horizontal designs, et cetera. This is merely a, a horizontal and vertical design, which I'm licensed to practice. It's in the statute. I sent a copy of it to you, but I can, I can give you a copy of it if you like.
Okay, so it, so that.
I would go to the board and argue, board now being the board registration.
That's why, that's why I provided the stamped land showing the.
Right.
Right.
The ramp.
So that takes Terry.
And the reason it was out of compliance was that the distance between landings was greater than thirty feet, and it was just a preliminary drawing, and it, uh, to show what was going to, where the handicap ramp would be. And so right now, we have a landing in the middle and a landing at the bottom, and at the top, we have a flat section going in a foot, so that the bar that swings circular will not be in the patio area. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I have others. I, I have a few, um, and, you know, I don't want to hog all, all the time here, but how can someone who currently parks in the current handicap space, um, near the existing dumpster location? There were steps up there, and that's been replaced now by the ramp, but how does one, in a wheelchair, for example, get up the ramp, and then how do they get to the office? Do they have to go across the patio and then down the walkway there? Looks like that's the only way they can.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
From what I see. Okay, and then, uh, another, if you look at the right-hand side of the patio, there's a dark line. Is that new construction or continuation of the walkway from those steps that come up from the?
That is, uh, connecting the patio to the walkway that goes to the set of steps.
And there's nothing been done on, or has there been any maintenance done on the steps? Because I know that was a concern of.
Yeah, it, it, the steps themselves do need to be, something needs to be done to them.
Right.
So there is a plan to do something. It's a, uh. Can't think of the word.
Low priority?
Well, it's. No, it's not low priority. It's amazing that it's going to look into doing something with it.
Okay, so it hasn't been done yet?
Well, that has not been done, but the black mark that's on here, I presume has been paved. I was out there around noon today. There was still paving in this area. I spoke to them about this. They said they're gonna take care of it.
Okay.
I assume they don't want to come back another day.
Okay. Um, regarding the parking, the original, if I understand correctly, the original request was for additional, uh, temporary parking of ten spaces? There were seventeen, seventeen approved back in two thousand and nineteen, but then we understood that there were actually, I think, twenty constructed, and that's what there have been for, since it was approved.
Right.
So now I want to understand that you're asking, so existing as, as, as it exists on the ground today, current set plan, if, if we had, if you will, um, would show, um. Or, or.
Twenty-one would be thirty-three.
Or, or.
Twenty-one would be thirty-three.
Your total launch to be thirty-three?
No, no, no.
Oh.
I said twelve and twenty-one would be thirty-three.
Okay.
And the, the number ten came from me, that was, this was during Terry's retirement period, and all I did was put a ruler on the plan.
How many would?
And figure how much width each space would need, and so it's just a lawyer trying to do math, which is always a terrible thing.
Okay.
So that's, that's how the number ten came from. But again, we, we don't believe we're gonna need those next year.
Right.
Well, here's my question about that then. Um, we're almost at September fifteenth, and most of the tenants leave now in October, you indicated. Um, the, we've been told that the additional, uh, parking needs, the cars parking on the grass and pretty much wherever they want, was because everybody does HP two and. pretty much wherever they want, was because everybody does HP two and year round and all those issues and, okay. But the, the plan that we've heard since we've been reviewing this four, five, six months is that the belief that business model will change back to its original, that it'll be J, J one, J six, whatever, whatever it is. So do we need to construct, do you need to construct a temporary gravel parking space temporarily for a month?
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Did I miss?
Those, that gravel already exists.
Right.
And prior to, prior to our use of it, it was blocked off by curb stops.
Right.
So, so we really haven't constructed anything. All we did was remove the curb stops. And we believe that next spring, before the residents arrive, the curb stops will be back in place. And the, and just, you know, the people who are parking on the lawn weren't parking there because there were no parking spaces. Firstly, I think they were just too lazy to park at one end and walk to the other end. And I've been encouraging Mr. Rudnick to put up a fence to protect the grass because all they're doing is wearing out the grass. So now that we have a landscaper in place, I'm sure that'll happen.
I, I, I agree with you as to probably the reason people are parking on the grass is not lack of space, but more convenience.
Right.
Which kind of furthers my argument. Do you really need ten additional spaces? It sounds like if that problem is solved, management of the, the property properly and maintenance of the prop, property properly, a lot of the issues we've been discussing for four or five months would be, should be, should have been handled by the property manager or the owner. And it just, to me, I feel like we've been going around in circle and things change every month. Did the, the ramp and then the dumpster was going to remain in the location it was. And then the next meeting or two, a, a month later, the dumpster was going to be moved across the parking lot. And now it's back to where it was. And all these moving parts isn't getting us to where we need to be. And I, you can probably sense the level of frustration on my part. As I said, I don't, I don't want to hog all the questions, so I'll stop there for now.
If I could, in the first place, the, the reason for moving the dumpster is that initially we weren't going to build a ramp, a ramp there. Then Terry came on board and suggested we build a ramp. So if we're going to build a ramp, we might as well leave the dumpster where it is. I mean, it was, in, in the the suggestion of moving the dumpster really only came about because of concerns I believe initiated here with a conversation with the chair about how a handicap person couldn't use that ramp. And the, the, uh, so I mean, that's just a natural evolution. And that was, and that wasn't part of the original permit, you know, so. You know, constructing a ramp in that location was not part of the original permit. So the thing's been evolving. So I apologize for the extent, you know, I contributed to any of the frustration, but you know, in that particular instance, I think we're just, you know, just trying to respond to the concerns that were addressed here. The gravel parking, we believe, will just, will be not used next year. That's all. I mean, that's.
So may I add a, address, I don't know if this. So I just wanted to make sure, at least in terms of like big picture for the way I'm looking at this was, remember we had a countdown, I think it was till October tenth or fifteenth?
September.
September fifteenth.
Was it September fifteenth?
We have a letter from Jack.
Well, that's, all right. I thought it was October. So I've been traveling for a few weeks, so kind of like still in time zone. But I'm always in there. So, but I want to make sure, like, we were thought, we're trying to work with you to make sure you're in compliance. Is there anything that, like red flags that you know of that, you know, need to be understood by the town, by the board, by the planning commissioner that are going to be an obstacle to you? So like at least we're aware of the red flags and because as it is, I thought it was pretty draconian. He was going to shut it down and retract the occupancy permit. So I mean, I think it's great that we're dealing with planting and all the rest of it. Are, are we secure? Are you guys secure with the demands by the building commissioner? He's basically working as an enforcement officer for zoning stuff at this point.
My understanding, uh, and I had many conversations with Jack, some happy and some not so happy.
Right.
And the, was that the thing that was really sticking at his craw was the lack of an ox, a permanent occupancy permit, lack of sprinkling.
Right.
In the office building.
Right.
And the, and the September fifteenth drop dead date was if there were still people living on the second floor by that date.
That was the.
That was it.
That was it.
Ultimatum. So and that's been taken care of.
That was how I understood it.
Sorry. I was part of the conversation.
Well, I read, I read the document.
Okay, good. So the, uh, the second part of Jack's concern was getting our modification approved by you.
Right.
So removing the tenants from the second floor and getting the modification approved by you.
With an asphalt and, right? So we're on our way on that. It looks like we're migrating toward that.
Yeah, I think we're very close to that.
Okay. So Harry, let's, you can't let us dangle like this. Sorry.
No, we have, we have Mr. Riley's word that that won't be used as a bunkhouse anymore. And when there are paying customers next year lined up that need a place to stay, we, this procedure hopefully will have been completed and there will be no way to ensure that that commitment on the, on the behalf of the, the applicant will have been, will continue to be complied with. And my issue, I will either abstain or vote nay if this goes to a vote tonight because I don't want my fingerprints on dead bodies if that place burns down and we stood back and said, well, gee, it seems like everything's okay with this. You know, the, the, the building commissioner has said it needs to be sprinkled. It needs to be sprinkled and he's willing to pull the permit of occupancy otherwise. And we have no assurance that it won't be used for multiple residents in the future. Once, you know, we have, we no longer have eyes on the, on the building and on the project. So I just can't in all good conscience stand back and say, you know, I believe you, Mr. Riley. I believe you're an honest man, but people tell me stuff all day long and I find out later didn't go the way they told me it was going to go. And so I don't think it's in your hands to figure out whether or not the applicant can make more money by putting more beds in that building next year when no one's watching.
Well, if I could respond briefly, the reality is that there are always people watching. The town inspects these things every spring. And other than, you know, the fact that, uh, we know the town's going to be inspecting it. I don't know what else to tell you. I mean, the, we have Mr. Drusilla here who watches us like a hawk, you know, so.
I don't think he's employed by the town yet, though.
I know, but the, you know, the manager, the guy who lives there was changing the brakes on his car.
We saw.
And somebody sent a picture of the car to Jack Mee. Because the car was up on, on blocks. I mean, I don't know, you know, the, I can tell you that Mr. Rudnick, the reason he opted not to sprinkle the building is because if, if it's acting as a dormitory, then it has to be commercial.
Sprinkling.
And the cost of the commercial sprinkling was sixty-three thousand dollars. And so for the five rooms that the employers were renting in that space, he said something like the rate of return was like twenty-seven years or something like that. So, uh, so, I mean, they just won't rent them. In other words, they, the, uh, Mr. Rudnick doesn't want the liability either. I mean, the, the, so.
I would think that would be a really signal thing, just the liability issue on its face would be dispositive, but.
So, I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know what else I can tell you. I mean, I could nail the door shut, I guess. I mean, I don't know what else to tell you.
Well, I mean, the, the original, the original application, if I remember correctly, was, uh, was issued or was given to the, the board in twenty nineteen, if I'm right.
Right.
Yes.
So here we are in twenty twenty-three, four years later. And, you know, from where I stand, the reason why this stuff hasn't been done is just all about money.
That's not correct.
I, I, I entitled to my opinion.
See, I mean, you know, first of all, you know, in Rudnick's defense, he's been through three building commissioners and three separate town planners. Initial building commissioner was a very nice guy and he gave Mr. Rudnick some bad advice. Covid shut down his business before the second building was even finished. Amazingly enough, the banks kept charging him interest on the loans. So, uh, he accepted recommendations that did save him money. But, uh, in his defense, you know, like one of the conversations you and I had was you know, the, the solar lights would save money over the electrical lights, which is true. But they knew from experience that if they put in the electrical lights again, they were going to be broken again. And he thought that with the overhead lights, there's plenty of light in the area. And so the solar lights, which just marked the edge of the sidewalk, were going to be sufficient. So it wasn't about saving money, but it was also an efficiency because you don't have to go around repairing the solar lights. So you know, he's a business guy, so, so, so they're always trying, well, yeah, so they're always looking for ways, you know, not to spend money. But, you know, he's accepted his responsibility. We, we have the electrician installing the, the lights. You know, and.
Those are the wired lights that are in the landscaping?
Yes.
Do you have Windfloes doing that?
Yeah, but most of them are already done, Terry said.
They're all done.
So they just got the same system that was there?
Because the wiring was already there.
Well, that's good, that's good news.
And the question is, what is it going to change, that particular type of lighting?
The fixture.
Ooh.
Back to solar?
No.
Back to solar, yeah. No. No, they've changed it to hardwiring. That's it. I'm sorry, I.
No, but the, the, the actual receptacle for the illuminating units, probably whatever fixture it is, is going to be you know, waterproofing or.
Well, they, the, the, uh, the original ones were shorter, is that right? And now the new ones are taller.
Yeah.
And they think, they, they're optimistic that they'll last longer. That's all.
All right, Anne.
With all due respect, I think our list, which Jack Mee asked in his letter to us September seventh, was to create the list of what was left to be done.
Right.
There were ten items, right?
Ten items. Some, but a lot of these seem to be maintenance to, um, to Craig's point, right? There were railings. We, we've added steps. We're going through all these things. But Jack is going to be the enforcing agent of this, correct? Because your occupancy permit is still hanging in the balance.
Right.
So is there anything else besides steps that we need to let, add to the list for Jack per his September seventh request? I know that there were hand railings that were in the pictures.
There was hand railings in the, um.
Hand railings, steps.
Paving.
Paving.
Dumpster.
Dumpster.
Right.
Parking.
I mean, I came up with the first list of ten, right?
Right.
So I just want to make sure we got.
Yeah, the.
And with all due respect, Attorney Riley, I love your story, but I've heard it a couple of times now about Mr. Rudnick's financial issues. But to Harry's point a few meetings ago, he's still collecting money and rent and it's still a viable business for him. So these maintenance items and the things that are left aren't just requests. They're part of getting this thing finished.
Well, I agree, and the, the.
And you're always pleading his case very well, but we still have a list.
No, I understand it, but so the railings that Jack mentioned.
Yeah.
Oh, so they were fixed the next day.
Pictures, verification, anything?
Well, Jack went out and looked at them and they were fixed.
He didn't have that on his list to us, so our.
I understand that. I'm just, what happens is the people sit on them and they're, they're inexpensive plastic railings and they break.
Then don't put inexpensive plastic railings.
Maintenance issue or different material.
Or behavior.
We're in the process, wait, we're in the process of replacing the plastic railings with wooden railings.
Okay, so railings. Let's get our new list for tonight. Steps?
I just want to follow up on what you said, Anne.
Yes.
And, and also with all due respect, I feel that we've heard a lot of excuses over the period of time that we've been considering this modification, specifically Covid. Everybody went through the same thing during Covid. I know that there were PPP loans. There were federal government loans, no, low interest. And I don't need to know or want to know, but to just say, you know, that put him in a financial bind. It put other people in a financial bind as well, and that's why there were safety nets.
But they, if I could, because he hadn't been in business for a year and a day. He didn't qualify for the PPP loans.
He had other businesses. He hadn't been in this business.
I beg your pardon?
He has other businesses.
Right, right.
But didn't have a business for here.
So, all right, so his principal businesses were the ownership of real estate that's rented. And so.
Not a bad time to be in a business of ownership of rental where we have no housing.
During Covid it was because a lot, most of his tenants stopped paying. And so what, just as a, you know, just so you know, so the bank threatened to foreclose. It was a forced sale of a lot of properties. So, I mean, you know, the one thing that really got hurt in Covid that where there wasn't a safety net was commercial rental properties. And so, you know, the, the, but I think the, you know, the reason for multiple delays is he kept hoping that, you know, a little fix here, a little fix there would take care of it. So because of your persistence, I'm happy to report that you know, the mindset has changed and it's just now, it's all about full compliance. That's why Terry's here. He's been supervising the work that's been done out there. And that's why the, that's why the railings are going to change from plastic to wood, you know.
Plastic is one of the preferred methods of railings themselves. It'll be plastic on this new set of stairs on this handicap ramp. But they're being tied into four-by-fours, pressure treated, and they're going to be solid. The problem on the northly building in particular, the railings were on this plastic fencing, which is part of the design and is terrible. And those, those fences, the white plastic fences, which looked beautiful when I first saw them, they need to be replaced or somehow or other supported far better than they are right now.
The build quality was like a real problem.
Right. Well, it, but the actual railings themselves, where they're connected to that fencing is the worst. And then you got people jumping on them and breaking them, but that's another whole issue and they should be repaired immediately. But the railings on this new handicap ramp are going to be the same thing, except they're going to be on a very rigid post. They're in two feet of cement and then I can't move, well, that doesn't mean much today, I guess, but. And then I can't move well. That doesn't mean much today, I guess, but, uh, they're in there solid. And they're about every five feet as far as the spacing's concerned, not like some of the spacings on that other. I think additional clamping is going to be needed on the handicap bars that go down in the handicap ramps to the buildings. And that's always be needed in order to firm those up. Thank you. But again, um, this, I'm not disputing anything that you say about the construction of the, the ramps or the material, I mean, of the, the handrails. But if this is a result of people jumping on it, vandalism, what have you, and the, the applic, the way it was applied and constructed, and the, the, the product itself, it's been three years. Doesn't somebody take it upon themselves? Or they have to wait three years to come before the planning board for, and the building commissioner to put a list together of things that should be obvious and should be handled as part of maintenance?
Point. I would just like to, um, re, re-magnify or, or like get a little distance on it, what we're trying to accomplish tonight. So from just working with Jack's letter, he said that if there's anything left, Attorney Riley will have these items written out along with the expected outcome, along with a timeline for completion. He will be gone until the 17th, but he returns in the 18th, and he wants to work out this permit with you. So I would recommend the following seven items be articulated in writing with, you know, kind of a coherent plan of attack and a schedule for completion. Number one, steps, and I'll email this for you if you want. Number two, railings. Number three, plantings. Looks like we got the start of that. Number four, lighting, which is done, right? So we're, we're there on that. But I, I think he has to see these, this checklist as a punch list for his approval via us. Number five, the pavement, which is on route. Number six, the Asbilly Plan. And then I think for your own benefit, for your own organizational hygiene on the property, a maintenance schedule, like what are the rounds that need to be done? Like what are we, should be looking at? What are the known weaknesses? So I think that's going to be your optimal guideline to deal with his demands and his willingness to do this on the 18th, which is what?
Next Monday.
Right. So.
Almost there.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're getting there, but I think that's going to be your best way of managing him and a lot, and help us get over the hurdle to get this.
I understand.
Through the, through the goalpost, you know, so we can't do it, only you can do it. But we're right down to, here we are, like at the last minute of the game here, so.
Oh, we're also on the two yard line.
We're also on the two yard line. So that's what, that's what you need to make your case with right there. Yes, sir.
For the Asbilly Plan, I would like to suggest that we fly the site and furnish you with a aerial photograph of the site.
That's great.
Look at it. You can see the trees. You can see the plantings. You don't have to walk up. You could have that in hand and walk out there.
Do you all have a drone that you can use?
Yeah. It doesn't make a lot of sense to go through and locate the edge of pavement and go through all of that stuff that. I mean, we've got thousands and thousands of points in the computer with that, and I think it mixed up for me anyway, but.
Well, I don't know about the legality of that. It sounds like an interesting method. Before I, before we conclude, I want to make sure that we have any comment from the public who wish to make it this time. So I suggest that our next meeting is the 25th? Want to make sure. I'm assuming we're going to be continuing, right?
Yeah.
Cause I, I don't think we have a, oh, it's the 26th, excuse me. So I'd like to entertain a motion to continue until the 26th, no later than, no earlier than 6:30 PM?
So moved.
Can I have a second? Have a second from, we have a motion by Mr. Chadwick, a second by Ms. Tucker. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So, um. Thank you, Bill.
Good luck with Jack.
Oh, look, Marion's still here.
Yeah, I know Marion. You're being great. We're, I just heard from Mary Masowski that, uh, she has two matters to go. That was 11 minutes ago. And we have one more item to do, so we want to vote on minutes.
We can get minutes done, yeah.
Yeah, so we can get minutes, and then, then we'll just be in a holding pattern. We won't recess. We'll just.
How long is that going to go for?
Um. That's.
I got stuff to do.
But we need your vote. I got stuff that we all need, but this, we, this is between, it's a half a month for them. They've gone, I want to like just.
I'd love, love to wrap it up, but.
They have a proposed motion.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'd, we'd be happy to propose a motion. We think that under the zoning bylaw, site plan review, that findings are not required. And so we could give you that language so that you could proceed to a vote. Alternatively, it might just be easier if you want Mary's input to continue since the hearing's already closed.
Well, here's the thing. What, what, here's what I want to make sure. A, so the, the public hearing is closed. We can start with, and I would be happy with Alan reading, a motion for findings of fact, just to make sure that we get the findings and fact on record from, which all predate, you know, go back to whatever the doc, what's the date of the document? The staff report?
February 28th.
February 28th.
February 28th. So, so far as I can tell, the facts will probably not have changed. And let's go through them carefully and then just make sure that anything that would have, we're all look at each other, and we'll do an editorial cross-out as we move into territory. Let's get, let's knock that one down. The second one is going to be, um, um, motion to grant any waivers, right? So are we looking to do something that we have language that will involve that? So that's fine. Then we just have to have perm, uh, grant permits with conditions.
If you care to grant permits with a condition, you can or you can't.
So the, so it's.
Conditions were only about, uh, lighting.
Screening and lighting. So are we?
We can use those, if you want to use the conditions, pardon me, I interrupted, but you can use the conditions from the ZBA.
So maybe we can do that.
Yeah, cause that makes sense to me.
Are you comfortable with that? Because I would hate to have this go for so long and have a hole drilled in that's going to cause you another headache.
But I, but I would suggest that this, this happened with the ZBA. I think as long as you make a finding here in your motion, that, um, we have met the requirements, and I'm going to track the language of the, um, 3555.
Right.
We've met the requirements of that, and based on the presentation and the submissions provided to the board.
Right.
That, you know, you grant site plan approval, then I'm not sure what the policy is with you all, with the ZBA. Sometimes we draft the decision.
Right.
If you want to have findings of fact, based on the fact that you found, based on the presentation and based on the submissions, if we want to pull out, draft finding, findings of fact.
Right.
I did that on the ZBA decision. And then, you know, you, um, you know, it's, I can draft them. It's not up to me. I mean, you would decide if they're okay.
Well, my thing is that the, the facts are basically location, dimensions, you know, condition, all that kind of. Then the stuff we're talking about for, um, the conditions are, I'm wondering if we could even use some of the language out of your presentation, talking about the stipulations that you're observing with regard to plantings and lightings.
Right. I think I would just track the language of the, the conditions in ZBA.
In ZBA, okay.
Because that makes it simple. We've already agreed to those conditions. I don't think you're forcing us to do as much as they are, but, but we've already agreed to those.
Right, okay. All right, so can we do that?
We can read it in.
If we, if we, um, adjourn, take the time to draft a doc, a document, how much hardship is another two weeks? And just agendize the approval of that document, no public hearing, no testimony, no nothing.
Well, the hearing is closed.
I know, I know.
But what, we can, I'm saying, let's, let's do it in the next three minutes.
We can agenda.
Let's do the first motion, and in another two minutes, let's get the second motion done.
It sounds like we don't have the language.
We do have language for the first motion, and we have the ZBA approval here in the packet. Okay, so, and Mary is, if we need her for that second one. Anyway, so would, I would like to entertain a motion to, uh, for the findings of fact for PB 2023-07.
So I'm moved.
So we have a motion, and the motion is. Here, I'll, I'll read it in. Yeah.
The highlighted?
Nope, the front page. Findings of fact. I, I can do it, if it's all right. If you want me to, I'll do it. So here we go. I'll make a motion that it case PB 2023-07, Round Cove Cove Resort Owner LLC, Four Cove Landing Road Owner LLC, Site Plan Review Special Permit for Structures Over 750, 700, 7,500 Square Feet, dated September. 12th, 2023. The applicant is Round Cove Resort Owner LLC, Four Cove Landing Road Owner LLC, AKA Waco Set Resort and Golf Club. The landowners are Round Cove Resort Owner LLC, Four Cove Landing Road Owner LLC, AKA Waco Set Resort and Club. The applicant's representative is Marion S. Rose Esquire, Law Office of Singer and Singer LLC. The landowner's address, care of land, office of singer and singer LLC, PO Box 67 Dennisport, Mass. 02639. Location is 2173 Route 28, Head of the Bay, Harwich, 02645. Assessors map 115 Lot S1-3, map 115 Lot R-2 in the residential high RH2 zoning district. The development type is redevelopment with a lot area of 966,100 Square Feet Plus or Minus. Project size is the total floor area for the buildings involved in this project will increase from 6,749 Square Feet to 16,416 Square Feet for the net increase of 9,667 Square Feet. Project description, the applicant is requesting approval for redevelopment plans to demolish three existing one-story buildings, units 1, 2, and 11, now recognized as Buildings A, B, and K, and rebuild three two-story buildings within the same general area of the existing buildings. In addition, the project includes hardscape, landscape, and amenity improvements. The construction of the two, three, excuse me, the construction of the three two-story buildings will result in an increase of 12 hotel units. The applicable laws and regulations are Sections 325-9 and 325-51 of the Harwich zoning bylaw.
Could you repeat that again? I'm so sorry.
The.
Nine and, and.
Uh, 325-9 and 325-51.
That, that's not right? No.
Excuse me, three, it should be 325-55 and 51, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so we have that wrong. So let's noted Section 325-51 and 325-55. Thank you. Um.
Could I make one more correction?
Please.
After we fought, we, we transferred Four Cove Landing into Round Cove, and that's when we filed the 81X Plan, so there's no longer a Four Cove Landing LLC. It's only Round Cove.
Okay. So note to.
Same address. Same address.
Right, so, um, a den, rider to this motion is that please identify the applicant as, uh, Round Cove Resort Owner LLC. No need to mention Four Cove Landing Road Owner.
Correct.
So those, uh, and further to, um, uh, yes.
One more thing. The 7,500 Square Feet of gross floor area, that was because originally we thought that was the way to, that, that the increase in hotel, hotel use would be covered or determined by the planning board.
Right.
And so now it's, it's only, um, you could say an increase, but there's an increase in square footage or floor area, and that's what requires, is a trigger for site plan review.
Okay, so, um, amendment number two. Instead of the 7,500 plus square, uh, square feet, please simply indicate increase in square footage.
Correct.
And finally, uh, with regard to findings of fact, that we recognize that the initial special, uh, excuse me, the materials submitted include a completed application and narrative, the fee worksheet and fee, owner authorization, landscape and planning design by Hawk Design Incorporated, existing condition site plan by Coastal Engineering Company, site plan existing sheets, um, and site plan proposed sheets by Studio Architects, PLLC, demolition and erosion control, grading and utilities, layout and materials, worksite sheets supplied by Coastal Engineering, and construction and building plans by Studio Core Architects, PLLC, dated September 12th, all dated September 12th, 2023. That is the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further comments on that mo, finding of fact? Yeah, please, you have a moment. I just want to make sure we get it this right.
Just want to make sure. Yeah, okay. Could there be a finding of fact that we meet the site plan requirements of the Harwich zoning bylaw and the rules and regulations of the subdivision of land and site plan review as, as amended?
Yes, can I channel that? That's our, we've already had the motion. It's been second. So as, um, I don't know, uh, do we have to unwind this and redo it?
Is that a finding of fact on the ZBA or not?
That's tracking the site plan review, um, by law.
Okay.
55.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend.
Oh, actually, could, um, I'm afraid since you weren't at both hearings, is it possible that somebody else could make the motion rather than you?
Yeah, sure.
This is about who can vote. Sorry. I just want to be careful.
Just, right, exactly. I mean, the technical, and the thing is, I'm not sure we can amend something. Can we amend? Cause this is in discussion. We can amend. Okay. So what, how, how? Why don't you confer? Why don't you confer?
I was just going to say, almost like I so moved of what she said to add into.
What I was going to say is, can you provide me the script that you just read?
Certainly.
Okay, then I will read that in. So that goes into the transcript.
Okay. You may have to see him.
It's, you're, it's going to reveal so much about your personality, you can't imagine. Cause I'm a trained graphologist, and I'll know all the secret components of your personality will rise to the surface. So almost here.
Just a moment.
Thank you, Harry. Appreciate your patience. We're moving.
You're welcome. I can't vote on this anyway, so I, all I, I'm staying around to vote on adjourning.
And for.
Well, and for minutes.
I'm moral support, Harry. Come on, Harry.
Okay, yeah, I've, I've lost track of that for a second, but I'm back, I'm back on track.
Harry, you can vote.
I think you are. I think you, I think we have to have your vote.
Yeah, you can vote.
Harry?
You were here last time.
Nope, nope, nope.
No, not according to this.
No, it's only Duncan, Craig.
These four.
Yeah, right, Anne and Emily. Okay, so just the four of us, okay.
Okay, then we, we have to continue, because somebody's got to watch the video, because we have to have five votes.
To do the.
Well, it's a seven-member panel. What, what is our, what are our?
This is a super majority?
Oh, no, it shouldn't be.
Oh, no, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry.
Simple majority.
I'm sorry. You're right, you're right.
Okay.
Okay. But it's like, I'm doing social permit, that's four votes.
Does it say? We can do this by simple majority. We only have to do five if it's a super majority.
Right.
We have a seven-member board.
Four is our function.
Okay, for site plan review special permit. Okay, all right.
That's my understanding.
It's our understanding. If this is wrong, we're sunk.
This is so key. We should have this as like a.
Well, hopefully we won't have.
I was just going to say.
Right. Well, but I mean, but still, still, if somebody misses one, if we miss one.
Couldn't agree with you more, but hopefully it won't be this complicated.
Right, right.
Or long.
Yeah, or without staff.
I would love to see the, the regulations. I would love to see the, the regulation that requires us to, I'd like to see it in writing, that requires us to have every member that votes on, uh, uh, an item on the agenda that required, uh, public hearings to have been heard every word of that testimony. Not saying it doesn't exist, I'd just like to know where it exists.
Probably in public, public meeting room.
Shayla had looked it up, because we were in this pickle.
Right.
And it was.
Multiple times.
And she counted, it's when all the meetings where testimony was taken, you had to be there.
No, that's, I, I, I just don't know what regulation holds us to have to that standard.
It's probably a mass general law versus.
If someone knows where it is, please.
Open meetings, yeah, might be open meetings.
MGL, I think.
We have some answers, not all of them, Harry.
Well.
All we can say is we missed you at whatever meeting it was that you didn't.
But apparently you're not aware that I missed one, so I don't know how we square those two things.
We were always aware when you're not here, Harry.
Well, this is the problem of tracking over time, but.
And we can't assume that we're not gonna have.
So the, the site plan approval section of the zoning bylaw includes reference under the waiver section that such a determine may be made by an affirmative vote of the majority of the planning board.
Okay.
But it's only the waiver section that indicates that, but since it's the only section of the whole site plan review approval language, I would extrapolate that out to the rest of the section as well. So, regular majority, not super majority. Did you get a hold of Andrew?
I didn't get a hold of Andrew. I was just checking to double check, because he, um.
Would be in any trouble for you writing these materials for us to work from?
That's, that is, I'm, I don't know what your process is. I've been able to do that with the zoning board, and I do it in other towns as well. Um, it's not, I'm not.
Not everyone has a Mary.
Right.
Okay. Not everyone has a Mary. So we rely on Mary to do that for us.
And it's within our discretion if we're.
Correct.
Provided that you approve whatever language we can use.
Right. So.
We didn't have Mary, we would probably be doing something.
Let me repeat the language, just so that we're all, you know, we can sculpt it. So, um, this is the last item on the findings of fact. We find that the site plan meets the requirements of the Harwich ZBA and the rules and requirements of the governing subdivision of land and site plan review as amended. Is that what, uh, sub, is that what you have subdivision?
Yes.
Governing subdivision of land and site plan review as amended. That seems unobjectionable to me.
Are you still in the motion?
We're, we're still in the motion. We saw, this is so, um, so then if we're agree with this, then I would like to introduce the following copy as the final, um, element in the, uh.
Findings of fact.
Findings of fact, thank you. We find that the site plan meets the requirements of the Harwich zoning board of appeals and the rules and requirements of the governing, uh, subdivision of land and site plan review as amended. So that is the full and final motion for the findings of fact.
A second.
We have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Now we have a finding for, um, that we would like to put forward that will specify the, uh, conditions of approval as per the language on the ZBA application with regard to lighting and plantings. Craig, can I get you to take a look at that and say, ask to devise a motion for those? I think it's two.
So nothing left.
This is additional, this is.
These are the conditions.
These are the conditions.
ZBA.
This one?
Right.
ZBA.
Right.
The applicant shall install screening of over twenty.
Correct.
So, so do we need to spell that out?
So we need to spell that out in a motion for conditions of approval.
Okay.
So you're saying the first two conditions is.
Correct. First two and only that we're going to stipulate.
Thank you.
Okay? Wait, is it the first two, or what, how did you see this here?
So I got, one talks about the screening, one talks about the lights, uh.
Those are the only two that we need.
Plantings will enhance particular increased natural. Yeah, I think it's just the first two, because the third one's about noise. Five, five's about runoff.
Yeah, no, I think it's one and two, because, because those are the only things that came before us, is lighting. You have the lighting, and then we have the plantings.
Yes.
So, I would like to entertain a motion for, um, conditions of approval.
Yeah, it's okay. I propose this.
I think Craig ought to do it.
I'll move.
Craig is.
Well, you have to make the motion.
Well, just read.
Entertain the motion for approval of the following.
Make a motion that we approve, uh, the following findings of fact.
Conditions.
Uh, conditions.
Of approval.
Uh, of approval. Number one, the applicant shall install screening of over twenty mature evergreen trees of sizes varying from eight to ten feet to fourteen to sixteen feet, planted at a grade higher than Two Cove Landing's dwelling in accord with the plans submitted by applicant. The applicant shall properly maintain all such trees and shall, in a timely manner, replace any trees that die or otherwise become unsightly with trees of similar size and type. Number two, only four rear-facing exterior lights shall be placed on the rear second-floor decks of buildings identified as A and B on plans submitted by the applicant, and they shall, they shall all be dark sky compliant and linked to motion sensors to limit their use during evening and nighttime hours. In addition, each night, the window treatments for each occupied rear-facing room in buildings A and B shall be closed, and blackout drapes shall be drawn over all rear-facing doors and windows. Lights shall be turned off in any rear-facing unoccupied room.
So, uh, we have a motion. Do I have a second? We have a second from Miss Brody. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your patience, and I'm talking about glacial patience over the course of a half a year. This is wonderful, you know, so.
I'll nominate her for sainthood.
Yeah, there you go. Well, and I, and I think the whole team that you put together is, I, I just have to say it was, you know, really nice, professionally done, and enjoyed, you know, high-quality visual. We don't get a chance to see, you know, really.
We're talking about railing to a gate, a picture of a light, yeah.
Right, I mean, the comparison is like night and day, so I just want to thank you for bringing such good quality material before us, so.
Thank you so much. Okay.
You know, I wish we had the kind of continuity of service from, you know, in our, in the administration, but we don't, and it's.
Shayla has been fantastic. She's such a big help, and Paul was great while he was here.
Right.
We missed him too.
Yeah. Thank you so much, and, you know, we made it three hours.
I kept mine to twenty minutes.
Yeah, I know, you're, you're great.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you so much, Marion. We'll see you soon.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Want me back?
Sure, yeah.
You, you might need to use them again.
I know, I'm, I'm done.
I'd like to.
My call might be.
You never know.
Yep.
Mister Chair, I'd like to.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, as written.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One extension, because I wasn't there, I can't.
Oh, true.
So, uh.
We're done.
Any further, um, business before the board?
So, are they coming back?
No.
No, they're done?
No.
That's it.
That's it.
I think the only condition is that if we have, if there is an error in our findings,
Or judgment.
or our, no, or just the language of the motions. But other than that, I mean, so we'll see, we'll know. I mean, and I think what we're doing is in good faith, and we had the help of, you know, right.
Yeah.
I have something to say, but it looks like Anne has something.
No, I just, are we still in open?
Right, are, do we want to get drunk?
Yeah, actually, it's, yeah, it's a board business.
Okay, good.
Okay.
The, the fact that when Shayla generated that document, show, pointing out who was cap, who was qualified to, to, uh, vote on what issues, um, it made me think to myself that we should probably find a way to not continue these hearings as much as we do. In other words, possibly prepare the applicant a little bit better, have a checklist of things that they need, because we've got five and six times that we continue them, and, and the, the, the problem with that is that we could get down to no one, not having a quorum, if enough people individually missed testimony.
Right.
It happened.
And it has happened?
It has happened, right.
It happened. We couldn't, um.
Last, last.
Last meeting, we couldn't.
Stonehorse.
Yeah.
So it just, it's, it, it seems like, I'm not sure what the solution is, but if we could find a way to not continue those hearings, then, you know, every time we don't have an additional hearing, uh, we reduce the risk of someone not showing up, and then having that person not be capable and qualified to vote. Um, and I'm not, I'm just pointing out that it seems like something that could possibly be prevented. I'm not sure exactly. I didn't come with a plan, but I did think about it when we left last time, and it was like, wow. We're, we're gonna, we could potentially fail to serve the public, um, by doing these.
Well, this is why we punt, we punt defensively, which is, you know, a horrible position to be put in, because we don't have a planner, and now when we have limited staff, we're not, we come in here blind.
I agree.
In some respects, in terms of procedure and law. So, you know, we're at our best when we at least have some sort of guidance. So, and I think that, we were talking about this before, you know, the market for people with planning expertise is now huge, and so it's a competitive marketplace, and we can't offer the same kind of deals as even a real estate agency can offer.
Yeah.
So, and, you know, there's plenty of, um, you know, private sector jobs now available to planners that for decades it was only public sector. So, I mean, I think we have a, we have a little bit of a dilemma here, and I think, you know, my personal belief is that, um, we would be far better served when we, um, are bringing in the number one taxpayer in the town, and continuing like this. It's, it's, does not reflect well on the town. So I'm in, totally in agreement with you, but I'm also kind of a little bit of a realist about our prospects. So the question is, can we create the resources and marshal the energy to attract the talent that we need as a, as a town that needs guidance that we need? And I think that's another thing. But, uh, not, so like on a tactical level, we need, you know, people here. On a strategic level, we should be interacting more often with this long-range planning committee. You know, and I think that, uh, like, I have very strident views about, you know, some of these things. I, this is not the forum for me to like be discharging them, but we should be part of a larger conversation, because I think what you see when you get thirty and fifty people showing up over the course of six months for a single application, it means that the, there's a, there's a, there's a, right. There is a weakness in the texture. The fabric is being torn here, and we, you know, we're the backstop, so. And it was interesting how that worked out, but.
I just wonder if, if we could give them a checklist.
There is a checklist.
Yeah, they have that.
What they have, before they can even request.
There's a narrative, there's a fee, there's a form.
They're not, they're not be, always behaving, but to your very good suggestion, Harry, the electronic filing system, um, we were talking on the side, if we can work with Shayla, and then all the documents related to Waquasit are in that, not just this meeting.
One folder, right, yeah.
One continuous folder.
We could have gone.
Where we can have the running tally of who is there.
Right.
And just keep it all together, so there's no, right.
We could do that with a Dropbox. I mean, the Dropbox works the same way.
But we just have to, um, change some of the, it's very good behavior, so that we would have been able to go to it tonight and said, here are the findings and facts and go through.
Well, this is an administrative question, because for us, what's important is the case.
Yes.
For them, it's the date, right? It's like, what's going on next Thursday, right? So like, we're kind of working orthogonally to like what they need, so we gotta come up.
It's not like we're gonna walk in with.
Right.
Six months' stack of papers.
But we should be able to have that whole thing.
We're trying not to.
If we have it digitally, then we can just do a quick search, a content search.
Digitally, not just by date, by, by the whole case.
By the global case. It would be great.
Add a folder every time, there's another entry, another hearing, whatever.
Well done.
I think it'd be great if we had like a, a single, you know, unwieldy.
It's a repository.
A single PDF that you just add, you know, another sixty pages to the PDF. So you do a global search for August twenty-second, boom, you get eighteen hits, you go to the top one, oh, this is the cover sheet, and this is what we're doing.
So I think, in the absence of a planner, in the absence of staff, but when we get staff back, maybe there are some things that'll make us more nimble, or.
Right, right.
So we're not fumbling as much as we did tonight.
Right.
I just wonder if maybe, I mean, if there, there may be a, some prohibition to this, but I wonder if individual, I know we can't meet together and talk about anything that's before the board, but would it be possible for individual, you know, rotate around, and individual, uh, board members take a look at, you know, uh, the organization, the, the, uh, the checklist, and interact individually with, as a volunteer, with someone that's coming up before us, and make sure they have all their ducks in a row?
Right.
I don't know, that's a good question.
Yeah, I don't know if we could do that.
I don't know for a matter of.
I don't, I don't know either.
That's not, that's not in our charge.
Well, one of the things I've noticed, somebody, and I won't say who, but there was an individual in town that approached me about a pending, potentially pending case, and I, it was funny, I hung up the phone, and somebody said, oh my god, you know, like, I was a developer for a few years. The last thing you want to do is approach somebody in the board. You approach the, you approach the department.
Oh, oh, it could be, I see.
Yeah.
So the apart, the department is kind of like the, the guardian of process, the gatekeeper, exactly. And that, so the ideal is that we're kind of unbiased.
Maybe it's not possible. I'm just thinking, you know, if we're looking for manpower, and we're all volunteers anyway, if we add an hour or two to, you know, our burden every week outside of this chamber, or every two weeks outside of this chamber, maybe we could get, we could, you know, help avoid the problem that I'm seeing of always continuing, continue, continue, continue. It's like, let's.
Well, again, you, we can't, if we can't provide, we, an informed, legally informed opinion.
Right.
And we have to contract Amy Quassel to do it. I mean, that's, that's our dilemma.
Right.
It's like.
And we've done that before.
Well, this is, that's the MO in the absence of a planner. So when we have a planner, we get the response immediately. Okay, we go to section three twenty-five fifty-one, section N, this is what it says. Here's what you're supposed to do.
I agree a hundred percent.
Is there any, like, we've had interim support previously. Is there any?
We, uh.
We don't have this.
Interesting. I don't, I can't comment on that, so. I mean, there are possibilities that have been discussed and then like rejected.
Should we adjourn?
Yeah, so.
Before we do.
We're talking about procedure now.
Yes, procedure.
We don't, and I don't think we, we need to have an open meeting to discuss procedure, because I think in protocol. So let's close the meeting.
Yeah.
And then skedaddle.
So moved.
We have a second. We have a motion by Mister Peterson, and a second by Miss Brody, all in favor, to adjourn, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right.